... December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Hearing.
Yeah.
Can everybody go on mute?
George, all right, let's mute.
All right, let's start by joining me for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Give a shout if you can here, because you can see we all have the new mandate in place starting today, so this week. First up is nine hundred Dutchers Turnpike AP packaging. Who's, is there anybody in the room representing that, or are they on Zoom?
It's Ken Casamento from LRC. I'll be representing that. Mr. Chairman, if it's possible, I can share my screen.
Yep, go ahead, Ken. Show us the updates.
Let me just move this over. So, as you know, we're here for an amended site plan. We worked before you before in July for the attached site plan in 2021. The amended site plan calls for the removal of the speed humps along the access drive, elimination of the dumpster enclosure, the addition of a chiller and pad, and addition of silos and a pad on the south side of the building. The removal of the speed humps come from a long discussion going with the town over the actual road itself. There was an original offer of dedication to the front half of the road that never was implemented, but there is a talk about the potential to connect it out to the current park that is in the back. And through discussions with Mark Pfeifer, he does not want them on the road. So with that discussion, we reworked the connection to the Eastdale property based off of field connections and field what they've actually constructed. So that's also reworked, and it's an at-grade crossing now.
Yeah, I see the sidewalk is already built.
Correct, and we're connecting to it. We're just providing an at-grade instead of a raised crosswalk that would have been on the originally proposed speed hump, which is not there now. The existing trash enclosure that's on the side and the proposed one that was part of the original plan, we're looking to remove. Currently, the Bosse's tenant is planning on moving out, and there is, as soon as they move out, they'll use the extensive dumpsters that are on the eastern, southern side that are tucked away on the south side of that building right away, and that'll be about the time that they get into the property fully occupied and operational anyway. So we're looking to, instead of incurring a cost of something that won't be used long term, moving that away. The chillers are located on the south side of the building. The, there are four of them, two of them proposed over there, and they're on a concrete pad with a chain link fence around it. The site plan also calls for four silos. They're twelve feet in diameter, and they're approximately thirty-six feet tall. The building is roughly about twenty-five foot six inches in that area that we believe based off of the other site plan on the other side. The silos are for a resin that are used for the extrusion process for, that's happening in the building. They're essentially inert material, as I understand it. There's nothing in it that is a problem. They just, they're piped straight into the building. We've provided the MSDS form for it as well, and we've still maintained the parking as it was before. There's no real change in that, so we haven't proposed any changes based off the previously proposed plans. The affidavit of public hearing was submitted to the office electronically today, I believe, but a copy of that is here as well. The hard copy will come as soon as we get it from the actual, the Kipsey Journal. So that's really where we are. So with that, I'll stop sharing.
All right. Thanks, Ken.
Yep.
Point of order before you get into Eric, I forgot your roll call and the legal, so let's do that, since we have some people on Zoom. Just wanted to do a roll call of the board members. Peter? Nope, I see you, but you're...
Here.
Ben? See, where's...
Ben?
Oh.
Here.
Yeah, I see Ben, okay. Nicole?
Here.
Rocco?
Here.
Bob?
Here.
Joan?
Here.
Myself, so Ahmad, our alternate is not needed tonight, so we have a full board of seven members. And tonight's meeting has been convened in accordance with Chapter 417 of the laws of 2021, which suspend certain provisions of the open meetings law to allow municipal board to convene a meeting via video conferencing. In accordance with the law, the public has been provided with the ability to view and participate in tonight's meeting by computer, smartphone, or telephone, and to view the meeting on the usual cable television channels. The recording of the meeting will be posted to the town website, and a written transcript of the meeting will be prepared and provided at a later date. There has been a roll call of board members, and there's a quorum present for this meeting, and I've also confirmed with the secretary that this meeting has been duly noticed. We have fulfilled our legal notice requirements by posting a copy of the notice on the town's webpage and on the town's bulletin board, and we have emailed a copy of the notice to the media, and we have confirmation that the legal notices for the public hearings have been properly published for tonight. Okay, thank you, and now Eric, continue with your assessment of AP packaging.
Sure. This amended site plan is on for a public hearing and for site plan review. Staff are recommending that additional information be obtained for our comments and those of consultants and departments and to defer it. With regard to the specific items, items, you have our detail, but just a call to your attention, the silos. The main thing there is, the engineer had pointed out, there's a potential conflict with the sewer line that needs to be resolved, and then planning also had concerns with the, and also engineering, concerns with the truck access to the silos since the parking in that vicinity is quite congested. The speed hump removals, we don't have any objection to removal of the speed bumps. I did speak with Town Highway Superintendent Mark Pfeifer this afternoon. He was not aware that, that, he doesn't really, he didn't have an awareness of the difference between the speed bumps and the speed tables, and he was opposed to speed bumps. And he also, so I think if the board, he didn't say, when I explained that the speed table was intended to be different and not an obstacle to plowing, he, he was open to looking at the design, but he said he's never looked at the design of one before and that there aren't any in the town. So my suggestion, if the board is inclined to keep the elevated portion of the crosswalk, that it do so only with the condition that it be acceptable to the Town Highway Superintendent.
All right, the, the crosswalk that the, I mean, the sidewalk that Eastdale put in place already has an off curve on it.
Right, yeah, no objection to the removal of the speed bumps, and if, if the board's inclined to get rid of the elevated crosswalk, it can do that also, but given that it's going to be a fairly busy place between the expanding manufacturing and Eastdale Village, you might want to keep the option of elevation in there if the Town Highway Superintendent is open to it.
All right.
Regarding the dumpster enclosure, we felt that was perhaps premature because at the time that that space becomes occupied, the applicant will need to return to the board anyway for a more complete accounting of uses of the facility. And on the chiller and pad, we just need some more information on the plans, what we thought the board should see what it looks like. The pictures in the, in the application were pictures of equipment somewhere else, not necessarily the proposed, so we thought the board should see that and get some information on their installation. Otherwise, it's, you know, they're all small things, but we thought the board would like to see those things for review before they come back.
Oh, I'm sorry, and the, there's a handicap ramp, which is one proposed element, and
we were proposing in the recommendations in number seven, that the planning board authorize staff to review it as a field change and not hold that up for site plan review. That's a life and safety issue that should get repaired right away. It may be, it's not clear, it may or may not constitute a change in the site plan, but if you authorize staff to deal with it as a field change, we can expedite it.
Yeah, I think that's fine. I would out there look at it, and it's kind of rotting away, so it's seen better days. So it's good to get that replaced soon. All right, thanks, Eric. Go to Andy. You got engineering comments?
I think Eric pretty much covered everything. The only thing I'll add is that, you know, we did, we were looking for truck turny movements for loading of the silos, just to see how that's going to work based on the site plan.
All right, thanks. At this point, I move reopen the public hearing for this project?
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Is there anyone in the audience, no one has signed up for this to speak, but now is your chance?
If you're on the Zoom and you wish to make a comment on this application, you can just unmute yourself, or if you're on a phone, you can use star six to mute or unmute yourself.
Ken, when do you think you'd be able to come back? January or February?
We're hoping to get back, whoops, for February, because being at the deadline is in a week, I don't think we'll be able to get it all together, so we'll be back for February.
Okay, thanks. I move we adjourn the public hearing to February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all the question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. All right, let's go around the board for comments. Start with Peter.
I have one question, and that is, is there any need for, or should there be a provision for containment for those silos?
I guess I can answer that. I mean, based on what we saw on the MSDS sheet for that material, it's, it's, there's not really any need for, there's no real danger posed by that material. Like Ken said, it's inert.
Inert is solid?
It's, I think, I believe their beads are like, almost like sand. It's, it's really, yeah, it's...
Not liquid or...
No, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Thanks, Peter. Ben, any comments?
I just, I don't know if I misunderstood in the past, or I'm not sure. You said the silo is going to be used for extrusion, and I thought they said there was not going to be any extrusion at this location.
I, I could have, again, the terms of the specifics, I'm not a hundred percent sure of the words, but they're using the resin to, to turn into the packaging. That's how they do it. You know what I mean? That's what, what it's for inside.
Is there any waste with this?
No, there isn't. That's my understanding. We can get some further information for you for that for the next submission, though.
I would appreciate it.
Yep.
That's it.
All right, thanks, Ben. Nicole?
Ken, is there any smells or odors from the resin?
As far, as far as I'm aware, no, but we can get some more information for you as well on that subject. I know that came up in one of the comments as well.
Okay, thanks.
That's it?
Yep.
Rocco?
I don't think I have anything at this time. Thank you.
Bob?
Yeah, just wanted to make sure I understood. You're saying that there is absolutely no waste that this organization will generate?
No, I mean, they're, they're going to have waste. They use trash and contos and things like that, but the, the process of using the resin doesn't generate a waste that would have to be removed, like a hazardous waste or anything like that, that has to be taken care of, that we're aware of. And I'll get clarity on that.
All right. That's all. I just wanted to make sure you understood that. Thanks.
It sounds like to just melt those beads and turn them into the bubble wrap.
That's my understanding, correct.
All right, Joan?
I have no comment. Thank you.
Thanks. I guess my comments, I mean, I have, I was questioning if the resin had any fire concerns, but it doesn't sound like it. Is there anything around those, those tanks, though, those silos, to make sure a truck or truck or car doesn't hit them and damage them, like some bollards or something?
We can look at that. I know with the truck turn movements that are, have been requested, that's probably one of the things that we'll examine a little further. I know there's also requests about a chain link fence around them as well for protection for public, potentially to keep the public out, so we'll do that as well.
And I believe I read that two silos would be going in first? Would they be the two closest to the building, probably?
Yes, that's my understanding, correct.
Okay. Let's see, we talked about the dumpster, handicap ramp. I guess my only... As people went around the board, I guess we forgot to discuss the, the speed table, not for the, for the handicap, I mean, not for the ramp crossing to Eastdale, assuming workers are going to be going back and forth there quite a bit, needs to be identified. Just want to go around quick again to see what each board member thinks of keeping that or, or doing the lower crosswalk as they're proposing. Peter?
You're muted, Peter. Sorry.
I'm, I'm comfortable with the, with the proposal as, as offered.
Okay. Ben?
I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, Nicole?
Either way.
Yep. Rocco?
I think I could go either way with this.
Bob?
Yeah, I'm okay with what's proposed.
Joan?
I was leaning towards keeping it if the highway was okay with it, but I appear to be in the minority, so.
I guess it looks like, looks like the vote is, you know, no, no speed, or no, what do you call it? Speed table? I mean, you got to make sure, got to make sure there's good signage there and that that crosswalk is well marked, even that, even at night.
Yep.
Gets dark early this time of year, for example. So make sure there's sufficient lighting and everything else. I'm not, I forget what the hours of operation are, that, that they'll be getting into the dark. All right, I guess we're ready to move forward.
I move the planning board to defer further action on this application, subject to the following. Respond to comments of the planning board and notes received from town departments and agencies. Said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as adequacy and completeness included but not limited to the following ones through eight.
Second. Move to the seconded, call to question, all is in favor, do a roll call because it's, we have some people on Zoom. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Ahmad, I'm sorry, myself, Carl. Aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good hour.
Thanks, Ken.
You too.
Thank you, Ken.
I'll see you again soon. Couple deferments for Arlington Farms. I move we adjourn the public hearing to January twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Next is Stewart Shops at twenty-two forty-five South Road. I move we adjourn the public hearing to January twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
Move, move the seconded, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. After redo the motion for Arlington Farms, because I said twenty twenty-one, so I move we adjourn Arlington Farms to January twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. All right, moving on. At this time, I move we allow public comment on any other items on tonight's agenda. We ask that you please leave me your comments in no more than three minutes, and we will consider them during this portion of the meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded, anyone out there have comments on any other remaining items on tonight's agenda?
And if you're on the Zoom and you wish to make a comment on something on tonight's agenda, please raise your hand or unmute yourself. If you're on a phone, you can use star six to unmute.
Scroll through the Zoom attendees.
Not seeing anything over here.
All right, looks good. I move we resume the meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Next up is Vassar College Faculty Apartments. I see David here.
David, you can't plug in anymore. I'm sorry.
I'm just plugging in electric.
Oh, electric, okay. Sorry.
Yep.
You can't plug in the laptop directly like you used to.
Oh, yeah.
Plug into the Zoom meeting now and share your screen.
Yep, yep, at least right now.
Yep, yep.
So where's that 3D model?
I didn't bring that to mind.
Remember the one for the science building? That was, that was quite extensive.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. My name is David Kavinsky. I'm with TC Development Corporation.
And I'm here on behalf of Vassar College tonight to introduce you to a new faculty housing project on the campus of Vassar College. I'd like to first start off by introducing the team that I have assembled for this project. Ken Casamento of the LRC Group is our civil engineer. Phil Greeley and Rich DeAndrea of Colliers Engineering are the traffic engineers. Don Petroncola and Mike McCormick of Liscum McCormick in Van Voorhis are our architects. Lauren Rakowski, representing Baxter Construction, is our construction partner, and Richard Cantor is our attorney. I'd like to first start by giving some of my background with this planning board, since many of you have not seen me in, in, in some time. I was recently here, though, for an upgrade of the site plan on Neptune Commerce Center, but I've been before this board for twenty-nine years. I started in nineteen ninety-two with the Post Road Plaza project. That was a redevelopment of the former Bradleys and Stop &amp; Shop and created what is now Post Road Plaza. My next project was across the street when IBM worked with us to sell me the seven acres that created Spackenkill Plaza and the Marriott Residence Inn. The project after that, which took several years to do, which I'm most proud of, is the Oakwood Commons Project on Route Nine, which was also a purchase from Route Nine. We recently added the Homewood Suites, and I've completed several other projects on Route Nine, including the redevelopment, it's hard to breathe through this, the redevelopment of the former State Farm Insurance Building into Riverside Office Building Two, and also what I just mentioned, the Neptune Commerce Center. Back in nineteen twenty, my daughter, nineteen, excuse me, nineteen twenty.
Baby.
Back in...
She's older than I thought.
Well, I'd really be old then, huh? So in, back in twenty twenty, my daughter was a senior at Vassar College, and a local businessman introduced me to President Bradley, and we began talking about the institute project that you recently gave the approval for. One thing led to another, and I volunteered my services on a pro bono basis to help them in the background. I didn't appear before you, but to assist them through the approval process. And it was during that process of listening to this board, I overheard a lot of concerns about the removal of Williams and what, how it related to a reduction of faculty housing on the campus. I began to prod and ask questions of those at Vassar College, and one thing led to another. I began to understand the complex issues that were involved with faculty housing on the, on the campus and what they had done in the past, and the issue with the rentals and where they had to be. They, they could not be at market rates for the faculty there. They have to be below market so that it's affordable for the faculty of the, of the college. So I began talking to them about a model of development that I used. Many of you know, probably don't know that I was involved with this, but I was the developer of the first phase of Vassar Brother Medical Center's expansion. The AMsurge Center, the AMsurge at Office Building, and the two parking garages were all done by me. That was done on a fee basis where they continued to own, lease, manage, and operate the facility, and explained to Vassar that we could do the exact same thing here, and would they give me the opportunity to present them a proposal to do something with faculty housing. One thing led to another, and we began a process where we set the goals of what we needed to do. Goal number one, and really the only goal, is to create a cost-effective project that can be rented at below-market rate rentals. That's what we're trying to do here. So we began a long, I've been at this for a year, a charrette process within the college with the various constituencies there to try to understand the needs and the requirements for faculty housing on the campus. We started looking at five different sites on the campus, and we did a massive due diligence process to understand what could and couldn't be done on those five different sites. We narrowed it down to two locations, one at the end of College View Avenue and the other one in the site we're going to present to you tonight. At that time, I requested of Mr. Welty a, a meeting where we held with staff, I believe you were on the phone call or on the Zoom call, where we presented the two sites and we began to just understand how the town would feel, how staff would feel, and planning would feel about that site or, or the other site. We then hired two different architects, and we completed a six-month-long conceptual design process where we actually designed buildings for both different sites and tried to understand how would it work and what would work best. We found at the end there were just too many issues with the College View Avenue site, and so we proceeded with the Watson site. We then had a meeting just recently, a few months ago, with Mr. Welty, planning staff. Carl and Nicole were a part of that meeting, where we introduced the idea of faculty housing on the Watson site, and we solicited comments and concerns at that time so we could try to build it from day one right into the project itself. We have also made a very large effort within the Vassar community to involve everyone there, not only just the faculty at large, but especially all the residents that we're going to show you that are involved with this, the surrounding area. So what we're going to present tonight is really a work in process or a work in progress. We have definite designs for the building, for the location, for how it would be accessed. We're proceeding with the landscaping design at this time, and there are some amenities that we'll present tonight, amenity areas that are still subject of conversation within the groups that we're working with. We've, we formed a small working group at Vassar that actually includes several of the Watson apartment residents, as well as the single-family residents in that area. There is a faculty committee for, for faculty housing, and we are working with them also. As we proceed here, we believe this is a straight site plan approval with architectural, with architectural approval required, and we do not think there are any variances that are going to be required as part of the project. So I'd like to jump into the site plan, and I'm going to have Ken Casamento bring it up on the screen, and I also have a site plan here.
What do you say? It looks good. Does the microphone work?
It does, yeah, I just got to turn it on and give it about two seconds to warm up.
Hello?
Yeah. You're good.
So I'm first going to start, the slide you see on the screen is showing you the entire Vassar campus. So I'm first going to start. The slide you see on the screen is showing you the entire Vassar campus. Basically showing you where the Raymond Avenue is, as well as Hooker Avenue, the location of the existing Watson apartments and the single-family homes in that area, and the location of the project site. The next slide is aerial view, showing you the same thing, looking from south to north of the entire campus of Vassar College, and the location of where the faculty housing project is located. If you drive down Hooker Avenue, you'll realize exactly where the existing basketball court is, is where this building will be located. The next picture, while not representing exactly where our site plan is today, I think is really good to show you where we are from a standpoint of access and how the site fits in within the Vassar campus. This is completely a faculty housing location. To the far north, you'll see Vassar Lake Drive, which has direct access to Raymond Avenue. There's a loop, and it comes around, and that Vassar Lake Drive actually turns into what's called Watson Road. So the second access you see on, as you come south on Raymond Avenue, that access there, where there's a circle at that location, is the connection of the circle, and it's known as the Watson Drive access. There is another little road off of the circle that you can see that is a little road that accesses just two houses, and that's called Orchard Lane. Next slide. One of the things I want to point out is that this is a fairly large parcel. It's 40 acres. It extends the entire length of Raymond from Hooker Avenue all the way to College Avenue. It includes some 22 different buildings on the site. And as you can see, it's not actually marked, but our site is at the bottom left-hand corner of this tax parcel. Right here. The next slide is showing the extent of the zoning for this the campus and not not only the campus, but for the project itself. The institutional district extends not only in the campus as you might know it, but it extends across Raymond Drive and includes all of the faculty housing on the west side of Raymond, all of the athletic fields and the other apartments that are student apartments on that on that side. The town of Poughkeepsie Line versus the city of Poughkeepsie Line is on the very south here along Hooker Avenue. So everything on the other side of our project on Hooker Avenue is in the city of Poughkeepsie. Everything on the north side of Hooker Avenue is Vassar College, and is in the institutional zone. Next. Some photos just to show you the site. Again, that's the basketball court that you see from Hooker Avenue. The Watson apartments can just be seen on the right-hand side. The next slide is showing a little further up on Hooker Avenue, the through the trees that are existing. Some of unfortunately, some of these trees will become, will have to come down. But this is the location of where the new project will be located. Looking down Hooker further, this is looking across the street, sort of adjacent across from where the project is to be located. And this is a road by the name of Austin Court. Austin Court has several commercial buildings on the frontage, and I believe there are three or four residences in the city of Poughkeepsie further down the road, some of them which are rented to Vassar students. Looking the opposite direction, there's other commercial uses, insurance company and the funeral home. And then on this side, all of the houses you see when you drive down Hooker are Vassar faculty housing, owned by Vassar College, which are land leased to the owners of the homes. You continue down Hooker, you come to the Brewers Lane, which is access to all the athletic fields. But everything in this entire length is institutionally zoned and is part of Vassar College. So now to the site plan. So the introduction of the site was to try to come up with meet the requirements of what we thought Vassar needs and Vassar wants with regard to the number of units. We had at the outset set a goal of 46 to 48, possibly get to 50 units. And when we began working through the conceptual design process, we found we could do an L-shaped building as you see here. And we are now actually at 51 units, and I'll get into the detail of the breakdown of that. The longer length of the building is on Hooker, shorter length is here because we wanted to preserve as much green space and be able to do as much additional landscaping as we could here to shield the existing single residential families' houses in this area. We will continue to use the existing circular driveway that has two access points, as I mentioned, to Raymond Avenue. I will get into the details of what we're going to do in all these areas. The traffic as we have looked at it, and the studies that have been done, we do not see the need for a curb cut, except for the existing curb cuts that are here. This is very much unlike a typical apartment building where everybody's getting up in the morning, going to work. Everybody comes back at a certain time. So peak hour analysis, when we get to traffic, doesn't really apply to a project like this. We also understand from parking and other issues that not all the professors own cars, and there's quite a few that walk, and there's quite a few that do that use bicycles. So we've gone to extra extent to try to find ways to accommodate this to be a walking site and a good site for bicycling. So I'm going to sit back down, and we're going to go through each component of the site. This is a blow up? Ken, are you?
Yep, they took it back some.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, no, no problem. Here we go.
All right. This is in a large version showing the building. When we get to the architectural side of it, you're going to see that there are actually, it's a four-story building. But it's a very different four-story building, and what we tried to do with the building was to create literally two ground floors. The 51 units will be serviced by 53 parking spaces. And Ken, if you would show on this site plan, while we have steps leading up to the entrance on the north side of the building, there is an entrance on that side so that professors will be able to walk out that end of the building, walk down those steps, and then use the pathway to go over to the college. Anyone parking on the site is parking along this parking lot as you see, and there's an entrance on the opposite side of the building, basically where the L comes together. And then additionally, it's obviously serviced by an elevator in the building. Additionally, on the far east side of the building, we have an accessible route where the handicap spaces, two of the handicap spaces are located. And we have an accessible route through that north end of that east end of the building, which will allow access through the quarters to the elevator. One thing I forgot to mention is I wanted to tell you the makeup of the existing units within this greater area. Watson Drive, the Watson apartments are made up of 18 total units, of which six are three bedrooms and 12 are four bedrooms, and they're all occupied by current faculty and families. On Orchard Lane, I mentioned there were two homes. One is a two-unit apartment building, each having two bedrooms. The other one is a single-family home, and again, they are all occupied by current faculty. Vassar Lake Drive contains 11 single-family homes, all which are leaseholds, as I mentioned. The Vassar owns the land, but the faculty own the house. One is slated for demolition as a part of our project. One is presently for sale. Five are owned right now by retired faculty, and four are owned by current faculty. So there's a total of 31 residences in that area. Parking is something that we would like to work with you on. We do not think that the I mean, the best way to put this is I'm not sure, and we would like to discuss this with staff, but there was a comment that there's a requirement for two parking spaces for each apartment unit. As we read the zoning ordinance, as I read the zoning ordinance, I don't think that applies to the institutional zone. It applies to residential zones, and that's what that section of the zoning says. So we do not think there is a parking requirement. Regardless of that, as you know, the planning board has the ability to work with us to understand the parking requirements. We can tell you that when I looked at Williams, when it was last operating, there were 22 apartments. There were 12 parking spaces servicing Williams. There was, of course, overflow people parked on College View, excuse me, on College Avenue. But from what I've understood, there were never a one-to-one ratio of professors to cars. I may be wrong on that, but that is my understanding. And that's why we are trying to minimize the amount of parking on this site with 53 parking spaces. We've suggested in our application that if the planning board wants to get an insurance policy, that there won't be an issue in the in the future. We think there is a location on the site where we could do additional parking. And we would enter into a land bank agreement with you that at some point in the future, if you said there's not enough parking here, we would add parking to be able to make it happen.
Do you know the bedroom count? You said 51 units, but.
So there are, when when Liscum McCormick makes their presentation, we'll get into that, but I think there's it's roughly a 50-50 split between one and two bedrooms of about 24 units each, or like 23 and 24. We have two three-bedroom units and one four-bedroom unit. The four-bedroom unit was specifically designed through the charrettes we had that Vassar every semester has visiting professors that just come in for a single professor, for a single semester. And normally, you know, they have to find accommodation somewhere. So we decided what might be really great in this apartment building would be to create sort of a suite in which there would be four separate bedrooms, each having their own en suite restroom, the bathroom, and then a large kitchen area, sitting area. So Don may be able to show you that on the on the on the floor plan. But in total, there's 51 units, most of which are one- and two-bedroom units, two three-bedroom units, and one four-bedroom unit. Next slide. So this is the entrance at off of Raymond Avenue. We're proposing to make major improvements to that intersection. Right now, the road's fairly narrow, and there's a circle there which is kind of confusing as to which way cars are supposed to go. So looking at this and working with our traffic engineer, we would channelize this and extend the length of the driveway coming into the project and create an island in the middle. We also found out that this is where all the children from this community go to catch the bus. So there'll be an enclosure installed there for the children to wait for their bus if there's inclement weather. The other thing you're seeing is the interconnection with the existing crosswalk. When Colliers engineers make their presentation this evening, they'll give you a more in-depth explanation of what we're trying to do with that crosswalk, but I'll be, I'll say we want to copy what was done further on in Raymond Avenue where the students cross, where we have the flashing lights, and there's an ability for much better visibility for people that are being able to cross this area. Next slide, please, Ken.
Yep.
On the opposite side of the site plan, from our charrette, we found that there was a desire to connect with the athletic fields. The faculty love to go down there to watch games, interact with the students. And right now, there's really not a good way to do that. So in our preliminary conversations with New York DOT, we've said, okay, we know there's a sidewalk on the opposite side of Hooker. On the south side of Hooker, it extends the entire length length. So there's no need to build another sidewalk on our side. We just need a crosswalk. And so again, we have proposed and are working with DOT to do a crosswalk. That driveway you see there is what I mentioned before. That's Austin Court. It's a natural location to put the crosswalk. And of course, we would do a sidewalk that would interconnect our southern entrance of the building directly to this crosswalk. Next slide. This was the fun part. There is a huge green area that it basically the kids use right now as a playground. There's a small playground there. But as a part of our charrette process, we understood that, you know, the 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 community we're trying to build here between the users of the the residents of the Watson apartments and all the single-family homes, how do we create a gathering area, a community area? And so what we decided to do was to enhance this entire area, and we're going to change the landscaping in that area so it's not all grass. First and foremost, you see, we have a pedestrian pathway. We're proposing it to be six feet to match with most of the walkways are within or the pedestrian walkways are within Vassar College. And we would stripe it so that one side of it would be for bicycles and one side would be for individuals walking. Along that pathway, Ken will get into the drainage considerations we have. But as we look at the middle of this, Ken, let's go to the next one. We want to create a central area where we would create a place where folks can come to sit, read a book, talk, have a dog park where professors that have dogs can let their dogs run and have some fun. The basketball court that we are removing, it has been decided we really don't need, or Vassar doesn't need a full-size basketball court. So we're going to revert and build a half-court basketball court in this area. We also are going to do an enhanced playground area for the kids. And this is the one area that we'd love to work with you on. We're not settled exactly on this. There's a lot of Vassar professors that have interests on how to design this and where to put it, and how the path should meander through this area. So I'll tell you, we're wide open to sitting down and and working with you on this.
I'll turn it back over to you, David, for the boards there.
Sure. So the one other thing that I want to say that we're wide open and working on is obviously the parking area and where this where the United States is going with regard to charging stations and electric vehicles. We definitely know that we want to make sure that the parking area has sufficient electric vehicle charging stations. A big part of what we're going to present is a in the building is we're going to have a bicycle room that will hold up to 50 bicycles. And so, you know, we want to put bike racks in proper locations throughout the site, and we will work with you on that. I'm going to give you a brief introduction to the architecture. So as I mentioned, the site is, and I didn't actually say this, but the site is absolutely level. And it's got terrific soils. There's no ledge or rock or any issues like that whatsoever on the site. But because of the small area of the site plan that we're working with, we had to go to four stories with the building. And you'll see from a difference, Mike and Nicole, from what we previously showed you, we've gone to a more contemporary look. We've gone to a gabled roof. We think it'll fit in better with this location and with the surrounding community. What we faced was how do we create a building that doesn't have the mass as looking from the Vassar campus? Because that's where 99% of the occupants of this building are going to enter from. That's where the all, you know, the the actual view shed that affects the neighbors that are in that area. Because across the street is all commercial. Because across the street is all commercial property. So what we did is we created a two-floor concept. You actually have two ground floors on this building. So on this side of the building, we're creating a metal hill, as you can see here, that rises up and consumes what was, is basically the first floor on the other side of the building. And I'll show you that architecture in a minute. It creates an entry into the ground floor, which is really the second floor of the building. We think it's a unique thing to do, and it really brings this building in context with the Watsons and the single-family homes that are on that side. The two plans that I'm showing you here, you know, are basically, one, showing you all the architecture, and then the one, obviously, where we would add landscaping trees along the way and what it'll look like when we get to maturity with the project. On the Hooker Avenue side, without landscaping, it is a look that creates, it's a four-story look, but with the, with the look of a three-story building. You'll see the main area here, and what we've been able to do with the roof is to make it look like it's a three-story building. There's a glass entrance here that I had mentioned. These are the apartments in here. And you see, we've basically done a gable to get that fourth-floor apartment into the design of the building. With landscaping, with maturity of the project, this is what the project would look like. We think we can do sufficient and very nice landscaping with this project to make it work so that there's no issues with regard to what it looks like from Hooker Avenue. Ken, if you go back to and go past the four slides. One of the things I did in my research in preparing for this project was to find that in 1965... Nope, keep going, Ken. Keep going. Keep going. Yep, that one. In 1965, and some of you may laugh at this because I've heard so many comments about the architecture of the Watsons, it won a National Architecture Award as the most, the best contemporary building from Harvard University and Contemporary Architecture Magazine. But more importantly, as a part of that, and the reason we got the idea of the metal hill... Go to the next one, Ken. Is the metal hill that exists behind the Watsons. I encourage you to take a walk behind the Watsons and see what was done from a landscape architecture standpoint. It was done for drainage purposes, but it was also done to create an area where the folks who are living in the Watsons are able to gather together and to be able to have a large landscaped playground. It also changed what that area looked like and what the buildings looked like. And so with that metal hill is where we got the idea of doing the metal hill with what you're seeing with this. So Ken, I'm going to turn it over to you, and please give your presentation on the site plan.
One second here. Just getting to the slide, it's a big... I'm all supposed to... Bear with me, share screen. So David, thank you for everything. You covered a lot of ground for me as well in your presentation. One of the things I wanted to point out is we did do a preliminary meeting with Andy's office, the town water and sewer departments. There is adequate water and sewer here. There's an existing water meter pit down right on the edge of the property in the south side here, roughly showing where my cursor is. The meter pit does need some upgrades for the meters that are in it to meet current standards, and we'll work with the water department to do that upgrade. There's an existing sewer manhole out, just in this area here that heads off to the north and then goes down towards the existing science building. We're proposing coming out the front, dropping a manhole and connecting into that manhole there and then proceeding along in that direction for the sewer. Water and stormwater is going to be captured in a few different areas. We have a bioretention area and rain gardens in the north end of the building to treat some of the area in here as well as the roof. We have two smaller areas on the south side which will treat via sheet flow the whole parking lot. We are proposing bioswales along the edge of the parking lots to capture that and convey the water into those treatment areas. We've done some preliminary tests. The soils are great out here. We'll work with Andy's office to finalize that into the full sweep as we prepare for the next submission right away. One of the other things I just wanted to point out relative to landscaping and in this side of the property, as you can see, the property line kind of jogs in and the DOT right-of-way gets quite wide. When you look in here, we're currently, the building to the property line is approximately 60 feet here and about 80, about 90 something feet to the actual road. We get a little closer in here, and it's actually 60 here. It's 89 in this corner, apologize. Got my east and west backwards. But it's still about 90 feet. What we are proposing, although we don't have landscaping here because of the proximity, we don't have much property to do work within that area. We have had a preliminary discussion about a use and occupancy permit to include landscaping along the DOT right-of-way to further enhance that view and, you know, kind of create a nice corridor of trees that are in there. There's a few, you'll see here, three or four trees that are existing, and we're going to supplement in between those. As David did point out in the rendering, there are a few trees that, in that corner, that are proposed to go out, but there are a few that we are trying to save as well. So in amongst the proposed trees, there will be some existing trees that will be able to be maintained. The emergency access to the north comes out through what is now the loop here and then gets out to Vassar Lake Drive. That'll be maintained. It'll have a gate. We'll work with the fire department on the specifics of the gate. A very similar gate, a click to enter that we've put over by Skinner Hall. So we'll work through that, those details as well. As far as the site amenities, as David pointed out, we're trying to keep the two big trees that are here, and these are still in a little bit of a flux in its location and orientation. But we're trying to create a dog park area that has the ability to kind of in-in amongst the trees here. Also, with that dog park, it'll probably just be a post-and-beat rail fence with a wireback mesh inside so it looks more like a wood rail fence, split rail fence than the conventional chain link fence. That's what we're shooting for, for detail at this moment. The playground area is more of an open area. We're not looking to fence it. We're not, we heard from the public that, in the neighborhood, that we don't want to really confine it to an area and give it more of an open flexibility. So we're still working with those areas, as David said. And with that, I think I covered, between myself and David, he's covered most of it. I'll turn it over to, I think, Don or Phil.
Phil.
Phil. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Philip Greeley, Colliers Engineering and Design. So we prepared a detailed traffic study. I know that your consultant has reviewed it and provided some comments, but let me just give a quick synopsis of traffic and pedestrian improvements and where we are right now. So as David and Ken indicated, we've had, you know, preliminary discussions with New York State DOT on numerous items, including landscaping within their right-of-way and other improvements. The traffic study was done in October of this year. We also looked at historical data from New York State DOT for Raymond Avenue and Hooker Avenue pre-COVID-19 pandemic. And then from a traffic standpoint, as David mentioned, you know, it's not your typical housing, but from our perspective to analyze kind of worst case, we looked at the housing as if it was, you know, typical in terms of generating traffic during peak hours. So we think that's conservative in terms of the internal roadway system. We've looked at some traffic calming and, you know, things in terms of controlling traffic internally. David covered more of the specific improvements at the Watson Orchard intersection with Raymond. That is a very abrupt intersection as you come in off of Raymond. There is effectively no turning radius. If you're heading southbound on Raymond Avenue, turning into Orchard and to Watson. So we're improving that intersection geometry and better control. In terms of pedestrian movements, we do have the existing crosswalk there that crosses Raymond Avenue. It's very wide. The center striped median is approximately 20 feet in width. We are looking at providing a refuge island, raised island area. And we've discussed preliminarily with DOT about installing, you know, similar controls as we have further to the north on Raymond Avenue, what are called the RRFBs, Rapid Rectangular Rapid Flashing Beacons. And with the width that we have here, the total roadway is over 40 feet, almost 44 feet wide. We want to have that center refuge area. There would be some lighting upgrades, sidewalk upgrades, ADA compliant items there. At the northerly, at the Vassar Lake Drive intersection, not as much at this time of the year, but, you know, when you're there in the spring, summer, fall, site distance is very limited due to the excess vegetation. There's some pruning and some vegetative removal to improve the site distances at that intersection so that we have adequate site distances at that point. The other area that David mentioned is, you know, there are pedestrians that, you know, from this complex that kind of work their way and meander and cross Hooker Avenue to get to the sidewalk near Austin Court is the name of the road on the south side opposite our site. And in some of them, we are going to the commercial facilities, even down near the Cumberland Farms or, you know, those other commercial areas. So we are proposing a crosswalk, again, based on preliminary discussions to do some type of a lighting improvement to ensure that it's well-lit and also to install the RRFB at that location just to identify the usage in that area. It's not a, currently a high pedestrian amount that's there, but people do cross currently. That will increase, and we feel that that's important to have control in that area. So I think, you know, that's it in a nutshell. There are improvements, as David indicated, we're using the existing access points, you know, not to create any additional access points out onto Raymond Avenue or at Hooker Avenue. And with those upgrades to accommodate both bicycles, pedestrians, and the vehicular traffic. And I think that's pretty much it.
Don Pendrcola and Mike McCormick are next.
Thank you. I'm going to share my screen here if I can. Okay, so the renderings have been initially shared by David. The massing of the building from the Hooker Avenue right-of-way is a conventional gabled roof. It's a seven-and-12 slope, fiberglass roof shingles and charcoal. The facade massing is broken up by a series of bays of varying widths. They protrude six inches from the base of the building and are creating shed dormers. Breaking up the roof plan, those shed dormers have a slope of two-and-12 with flat-seamed metal roofs. The bays permit us to make a change in siding materials from the five-inch horizontal clapboard hardy siding in the dark gray color, which visually communicates with the adjacent residential structures, to a lighter gray vertical board and battened hardy siding at 24-inch spacing. The entrance and the stair towers are highlighted with glass storefront assemblies. The main covered entrances are accentuated with a flat canopy in Vassar Burgundy. That canopy detail is repeated at the stair egress doors. The building dimensions, it's about 55 feet wide. Total length of the building on the north this side is 275 linear feet. On the Hooker Avenue side is 365 linear feet. The building is four stories in height above grade plane on the south side, three stories above grade plane on the north side. From the south elevation, go back one. So from the south elevation, the building eve is 33 feet above grade to the main eve line. The dormer eve is at 42 feet, an additional nine foot high, and the top of the ridge to the gable roof is at 49 feet eight inches. Going to stand by. In plan view, showing the plan view. Okay. Stand by, I'm sorry. Okay, so in plan view, this is the ground floor plan is accessed from Hooker Avenue. So this is the main entry here, central stair. We have units on the exterior wall. The rear, as noted previously, is below grade. So we have some common mechanical storage facilities. Our communal spaces consist of a community room, bicycle storage. Some of those spaces, these are on the east end of the building here. So they're located away from the single-family residences and have access to that plaza that is over here. The bicycle storage comes out. This is also our primary handicapped entrance from campus. The upper level, up the steps, we again have a central living room, central core, and our standard units, unit layout there. The building floor plate is approximately 17,900 square feet. We have 25 one-bedrooms, 23 two-bedrooms, two three-bedrooms, and four one-bedroom units, a total of 51 units. And to answer one of the questions that was brought up, that is equivalent of 81 beds. And that is the architectural in a nutshell. I'll pass it back to David for timeline discussion and Q and A.
Thank you. So I'm going to wrap up and give you an explanation of the difficulty we face with the delivery of this project. As you probably have seen with Vassar over the year when they do renovations of their student housing, that student housing has to be done over a very short time period because you can't be working in the buildings or doing something like that when the students come back to school. So the same thing with faculty housing. In order for faculty to be in place for the school year, we are seeking to deliver this project in a very narrow one-month window in July, between July 15th and August 15th of 2023. And with a 12-month construction period, we would respectfully like to work with you, work with staff as closely as possible, hold special meeting or meetings if necessary, have other meetings so that we can try to move this project forward, that we can have all the approvals in place in a very rapid timeframe, hopefully by April, May, so we're able to proceed with construction. Hopefully by April, May, so we're able to proceed with construction. We believe, given the single purpose institutional use, the infill location, the zoning, no need for additional curb cuts, we believe this can be a negative declaration project, and that's what we are going to seek with you. Thank you very much for your time, and any questions, please.
All right, thanks David for the extensive overview of this new project. We go to Eric for department recommendation tonight.
Sure. This new application for site plan review is the action before the board tonight is just for declaration of lead agency. After which, in a few, the next time around, it could be put on presumably for public hearing. Our comments are, they're pretty straightforward from the planning department and from others. Number of informational items, as far as parking, Dave mentioned earlier about the requirement. He's corrected that the planning board does have discretion over the parking. So, staff also invite the board to discuss perhaps a ratio of parking that you'd like to see for this project. At least preliminarily, you may not have enough information yet to know, but some preliminary guidance for the applicant and for staff with regard to that. And otherwise, there's a variety of comments for your discussion, it's a first time appearance.
Yep.
So, discuss away.
Thanks Eric. We have Andy discuss first.
I'm just gonna, we don't really have a whole lot, we have a lot of detailed comments. We're still waiting on a SWIP, as Ken commented, that that's, will be forthcoming, but they've planned for it. I do want to comment on the pathway through the green area. I think one of the comments that I had mentioned during the pre-application meetings was a trend in some colleges to actually have separate bike paths versus pedestrian paths. And I'm a little worried about the width of the path that's indicated at six feet. That's just a little bit wider than a normal sidewalk. I think you might want to consider either widening that or possibly separating that into separate bike and pedestrian. So, that's, that's one comment that actually isn't in my comments, but I'll offer that tonight. And the other thing is, we talked about these mid-block crossings. I think the crosswalks are a great idea. I just know that the DOT tends to frown on them. I wonder what the likelihood of the DOT approving new crosswalks, particularly the one on Hooker Avenue. If there's, if there's been any, I know Phil mentioned that they'd been, there's been discussions with the DOT. If, if the DOT indicated that they were in favor of that crossing on Hooker.
Andy, I would note that Vassar has a very close relationship with DOT after what happened a couple of years ago with the student getting hit there. So, they've been very cooperative in working with us and told us they will work with our timeframes to get this done.
Great.
So, yes, there's a lot of details to still work out.
Okay, that's all I have.
All right, thanks Andy. I believe Mark is on, he did some review of initial traffic study.
Yes, good evening, it's Mark Patrol from JMC, thank you Carl. We did review the traffic study that was provided for the project. We just had a few comments with the traffic study. Just asked for a discussion and the comparison of the record DOT data to the traffic counts that were compiled. Also, they did incorporate some other development traffic in that analysis as well. And we do recognize that the generation that they use is likely to be conservative in the aspect that this will likely result in a lot of walking trips. However, they did this as a general multifamily housing development in their trip generation in their study. There also are just some coordination items that, there are improvements that are mentioned in the traffic study but not represented really in the site plan, so we asked for them to be updated and consistent. And just some minor details with related to how an intersection was analyzed. We asked for a little different alignment on that. Secondly, we did look at the site plans as well, and we have some comments related to some signage and some striping. Also, we're asking about some confirmation of the, of the gate because it appears that the, the emergency gate that's shown on the western side of the building, there appears to be a refuge vehicle going through there. And just wanted to know when that would be in operation, when it's fully closed. So, just really letting the town know where those specifically are. That's it for my written comments. I do, I do note from listening to the presentation, David had mentioned a few things, but I will make note that the site plan that I received is slightly different from the site plan that was presented to the board, being that the orientation of the building is slightly different. And the walkway over to Hooker is slightly different as well. And based on what David had mentioned, I know they have the crossing on Hooker, but you know, if people are really looking to utilize the athletic fields and, you know, it'd be easier if they have a sidewalk on that side of the road where they wouldn't have to cross to go over. So, essentially they would cross Hooker twice instead of just having a sidewalk on that side of the road where they wouldn't be involved with vehicles if they were to access over to the athletic fields. Those are just some additional comments that I just thought of when hearing the presentation tonight. But that's it for me.
Do you have any comment on the number of parking spaces at this time?
Not at this time, I'll have to look deeper into that. I didn't really look into that in depth yet.
Thanks Mark.
It probably would be good to get Mark, Mark to get some data from Vassar on what their existing housing. You know, you mentioned some in your presentation about Williams numbers, but maybe having something, you know, that we could use to gauge, you know, a little bit better since it is unique and unlike most multifamily housing.
Yep.
So, on the Vassar campus, Mike, the only thing that it really has relevance would be Williams. Everything else are other faculty type housings, single family homes, and the Watsons. So, Williams is it, and we can put that into writing in our response.
Well, I guess, you know, you can look at Vassar, but is there any other, you know, nearby colleges, not just Vassar, that can use as a sample basically to try to get an idea as far as what they're providing for parking? So, you know, Vassar is good to understand, and I know, I guess, there's limited options to really get a parking demand on that, but maybe there's some nearby colleges that have these type facilities that can serve as a basis as an example.
All right, thanks Mark. David, just for clarification, you know, the building orientation and the site and parking layout that you're showing on these is different than what we have on the.
Yes, as I mentioned, it's a work in process, and we made the determination over the last several, I'm going to say week to 10 days, at the orientation of the building and what we're doing, we're not going to work with the single family home. So, this is what, we're going to be making another submittal by the 27th to appear before you in January, so you'll have all the updated plans.
So, this is the, so that's the more reason.
This, this is, this is our final plan.
That's what I was going to verify.
Yes, sir.
Hey David, it's Rich Tan Drav, I could just jump in real quick from Colliers. I was just going to comment on the parking. We do actually have some existing parking information for the Watson apartments as well, so we can actually provide that. Can you provide that as a comparison for, for the parking numbers?
Sounds good, all right.
Could I interject on parking, since you're on that topic?
No, that's not a public hearing.
Oh, okay, sorry.
That's okay.
All right, let's go around the board for comments now, start with Jones.
Hi, overall, I think it's a very lovely project. I do have concerns about the parking. That's really, the parking, that's really my primary concern because if you propose the number and then you take off the handicap, you don't even have enough parking per unit. So, that's an issue. And also, I would ask the question whether the institute's application was governed by the town zoning or the town's ordinance for parking. When you, when you put that before the town, did you assume that the town's parking ordinance applied?
Well, I, so maybe I misspoke. Of course, the town ordinance applies to everything in.
Applied as.
On the campus. There was a reference in the response we had that there's a requirement on off-street parking that all residential units must have two spaces per dwelling unit. But if you look at that and you read it, it says actually that the, in the two columns that are listed in the zone, it says all residential districts, two per dwelling unit. And this is not a residential district. There are, they then specifically list many of the districts, but there's nothing for the institutional zone. So, we don't want to make a big deal out of that, we need to work with you on parking. We need to come to a number of parking spaces that, that works. What Vassar has from experience is that we definitely don't need two per unit. We think one per unit is sufficient, and I understand your concern about the handicap spaces, and we can always add a few more.
Yeah, so really, from my perspective right now, the parking is the main issue. Everything else looks very lovely. I would agree with our consultant that a sidewalk down the ballfield side of Hooker makes more sense than to cross.
So, may I address that?
Sure.
So, I would love to do that, but one of the things I mentioned is that this project is about bringing the lowest possible rental rates we can to the professors. And so, every dollar more that I spend in construction costs or whatever is going to relate to an additional cost for the, for the rental of the unit. There's a direct relationship there. So, while we're trying to give you the best project we possibly can, there's certain areas where we have to pick and choose and say, all right, there's already an existing sidewalk all the way down Hooker. It makes a lot more sense just to provide a crosswalk than to do a sidewalk that is in the DOT right of way, has very specific requirements as when it crosses, like, there's like 12 driveways we would have to cross. Those driveways, I think it requires 12 inches of subbase, a six inch concrete slab. So, it gets very expensive to build a sidewalk down that side. So, we would really respectfully request that you don't make us do that.
Okay, all right.
David, so really, one other item, there's, there's some right-of-way restrictions that are not available to build the sidewalk for that entire distance. And it's properties that we don't necessarily have full control over. That was another consideration when we looked at it, you know, in addition to the cost, but it may not even be feasible in those couple of areas that are very tight with the grade to fit a sidewalk in there.
Thanks Phil. Thank you.
Thank you, and I look forward to reviewing this application inside our regularly scheduled meetings.
Okay, John.
Great, thanks John. Bob, you anything?
I'm here. I mean, I think the project is excellent. You know, I liked the presentation and what they're trying to do. You know, I agree with the comments about the handicap parking, et cetera. The, as far as the crosswalk to get to the sidewalk, is that, I don't recall if that intersection has the ability to have a pedestrian-only crossing where traffic in all directions would stop. Does anybody know that?
There's no, there's no traffic lights at either locations where we're looking to install crosswalk. Or, at the existing crossing at Raymond Avenue, there's no traffic light there. And where we're looking to add a crossing at Austin Court on Hooker Avenue, there's no traffic light there either. We're all looking to add rectangular rapid flashing beacon similar to what's up on Raymond Avenue north of this location for pedestrian safety, so.
Raymond Avenue and Hooker, there's traffic out there.
Yeah, Raymond and Hooker, that is correct.
Right. So, I mean, the sidewalk is on Hooker, right? You have a side of Hooker that you want to utilize or that I missed.
Yeah, but it doesn't go down as far as Raymond Avenue. So, we're looking to connect over at Austin Court, which is kind of at the.
Okay. Okay. All right, that's all I have.
All right, thanks Bob. Rocco?
Okay, thank you. Also, I like this project. I've got several questions and comments. First, would like to ask, keeping with what Vassar has done with the Vassar Institute, are you planning any geothermal heating for this complex?
No, we would not be able to afford that, Rocco, in this project. These will be, so we have to meet Vassar's sustainability goals, and I forgot to mention that during my presentation, so thank you for bringing up this question. This will be an all-electric building, there'll be no fossil fuels whatsoever.
Okay.
We are going to try to make some provisions for future installation of solar panels. While we can't afford them at this time, that Vassar may desire to add them down the road. But no, these will all, as normal apartment, shouldn't say as normal, as normally built apartments are right now in this area, there'll be split air conditioning systems. So, there'll be a condenser on the outside somewhere and a head unit or a ceiling unit in, inside which provides the, the heating and cooling.
Okay, along with that, as you put in your infrastructure for not only the building before the EV charging in the stations, have you given any thought to maybe getting that extended and maybe offered into the Watson complex, the Watson apartments?
So, we have not thought about that. The way the parking is designed right now for the Watsons is each individual unit has its own parking garage? Parking garage, has a garage associated with, with the unit? It's more like a condominium type unit or a, I'm going to call it a townhouse? So, I'm not sure, unless we were, you know, unless we had to put one in every single location, I'm not sure there's a central location where we could potentially do that because most of the professors are parking their cars in their garages.
Okay, and then when you put the EV charging stations in, you're going to choose the cabinet types?
We'll work with you exactly what you want, absolutely. Everything will be underground also.
Oh, great, okay. With the dog park, I like the way the fencing is going to be, but what is the ground material? Because dogs tend to chew up grass like it's nothing, then it could become a mud pit. And then also, along with that, are you going to be able to provide the stations for what I call doggy poop bags and maybe garbage as well?
Yes, actually, they'll be installed along the entire pedestrian pathway, and your, your point about how a dog park can get disheveled is very well taken. And we're working with Vassar's facilities maintenance folks to try to understand, you know, is there a special type of grass or something that will stand up better to what we're going to do there? We're not looking to do anything special in that area. I did mention that that large area, you see there's different green colors?
Yep.
I'm sorry. You see there's different green colors here and here? So, one of the things we're, we're looking at and would like to do, facilities at Vassar has said, do we have to have so much grass? There's so much maintenance involved with it. So, some of those areas are, we are going to change over to be a wildflower meadow. So, we're going to have areas of grass and areas of wildflower so that we enhance that whole area. But the issue you brought up about the dog park is something we're, we are, we are working on.
Okay, I have to support Andy and what he is, and what he was saying about the width of the sidewalk because six feet seems pretty narrow. If I'm not mistaken, the county just announced an $11 million project where they were going to include, they weren't exactly rail trails, but transportation avenues along where the CSX tracks were. And some of them are going to be pedestrian and bicycle paths. And they have, that could be a model for you to use regarding the width, and they will be striped.
We'll, we'll take a look at that. I want everyone to put it in context of, we've got potentially 50 faculty in this area. They, you know, vary during the day to go through, there's other residents in this area. I don't think you can compare this to a county trail where you have thousands of people walking over one of these or riding over these on a weekly basis. That, that's not going to be here. So, work with us to keep it in context of the setting here. Sure, we'll look at making it a little bit wider, I absolutely, I agree with you.
Okay, except if you've walked on even the. Okay, except if you've walked on even the rail trails and those bikes go by.
Yeah, it's dangerous.
They take, I mean, you have to jump out of the way.
I know. And nobody listens to the striking.
And if there's a wheelchair involved, then it even makes it more complicated.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Rocco. Nicole?
I think you've covered a lot tonight, so I'm going to keep my comments short. As far as taking those trees down that you were talking about earlier, we're just going to have to make sure that you do that between October and March because of the possible Indiana bat habitats there. What else did I want to go? Also, as far as parking is concerned, we're going to have to see about possible land bank parking, because I also feel like that might not be enough parking that you're proposing currently. And, anything else? I think that's it for now.
Alright.
Thank you.
I would remind everyone that we're more than willing to work with a land bank. You know, so I don't want to overbuild this and find out that we've just done too much parking. I understand there's concern, so let's really carefully look at it and try to work with each other to see what makes sense, knowing that we're more than willing to come back and add parking spaces if it's necessary.
Do you have a spot picked out?
Yes, we do. Yep, we do. Along Watson Road, we think we can add parking along Watson Road.
Ah, yep, that makes sense.
It's very, very, very close to it.
Yep. Great. Ben, do you have anything?
Yes. First of all, I think it's a great project. I like it. Good to see this being done. The two comments I have are on the apartments on the Hooker Avenue side, where you're going to go in from Hooker Avenue or from the Raymond, and then go downstairs. Are there only going to be windows on the front of the building there on Hooker Avenue? No other windows in the back, because that's all going to be below grade, so the only windows are in the front? And the second thing is, the traffic and pedestrian studies, are they done independently just for this project? Or does the in and institute affect the traffic and pedestrian at all? Was that considered at all?
So, Ben, just to answer you with regards to the traffic, the traffic study includes the traffic associated with the VASR in an institute. It's in the study as an other development, as well as the Raymond Avenue mixed-use development of Arthur May. Re-development is included in there as well.
Good.
And to answer your other question, Ben, I'm going to move over here, if you, if the camera can work with us here.
Is that showing up?
Can it?
Yeah, I think the camera, hopefully the camera guy can zoom in. There he is. Alright, yep, you got it.
Okay. So, the first floor units on this side, there are no first floor units on the other side. That's, remember, it's on the second floor on that side, and it's all landscaping, so they look out. But here, indeed, what we're looking at in the apartments that are on this first floor, there's not only a window, but there is a sliding door or a French door that will lead out to a little patio. And each one of these units across this first floor will have that little patio area that will connect and have landscaping around it. And it's about seven feet from the sidewalk. So there's plenty of room from the edge of the apartment to do a nice little patio and some landscaping around each one of these areas. Does that answer your question, Ben?
Yes. But, the only light coming in is from that window and door in the front. I guess on the other floors, you're going to have windows on both sides of the apartment, but down here, it's only going to be limited to whatever comes into the front.
Don, can you help me with this? But I think each elevation of all apartments have, you know, a window and a door meeting the, Don, can you help me?
Yes, the unit layouts, whether or not they are one bedrooms or three bedrooms, every bedroom has a window, every living area has a French doors for natural light and ventilation. On the upper levels, the French doors would have the Juliet balconies, but they all face the exterior walls. There are no unit, there's only on one side, I believe it is the west side, do we have a unit that faces the end of the building. In all cases, it's a typical double loaded corridor, so the unit has all of its windows on the exterior face, whether or not it's facing south or north. Would it help to look at a plan?
Yeah.
Okay, so here, you know, so common corridor here in the center, so this is a typical one-bedroom unit. This is the living room and kitchen, it would have its French doors or sliders here with Juliet balcony. The bedrooms have its double window here. Similar on two-bedroom unit, living combination space here has its windows, bedroom, window, bedroom, window. So though we could put windows on the ends of the building, there's really no need for them, because that's bathroom and, you know, bedroom, where you need to put a dresser or furniture. So only in some areas where we have a three or a four on the end of the building, do we have windows on the east or west end.
Okay, I got it.
Anything else, Ben?
Nope.
Alright, thank you. Peter?
My only concern, as has been expressed earlier by other board members, is 50 parking spaces for 81 bedrooms. If it turns out that we have to go to a land bank, that has to be done before site plan approval, the land bank area is going to have to be clearly delineated, and it's going to have to be part of the approval process.
Okay.
That's, one other thing, I didn't notice, it doesn't appear that there are any roof-mounted units, but keep in mind that if there are roof-mounted units, they have to be screened. And that's all I have.
Alright, thanks, Peter. My comments, I guess most everything was covered. The architecture, I think, looks pretty good. Other than what Peter mentioned, that make sure things are screened. There's, you've covered a lot of amenities and all the, you know, the dog park and the bike storage and all kinds of stuff, so, looks like you've, it's a well-thought-out plan.
Thank you.
And looking forward to seeing it proceed.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more thing I'd like to say. I think this is Carol's last evening before, with the planning board, before you retire. And I just want to say thank you very much. Been good working with you all these years. You're welcome.
Thanks, David. Alright, any other last comments from board members? I think we're, I think we're good.
I move the planning board declare its intent to be the lead agency to coordinate the environmental review of the proposed project as an unlisted action and authorize the planning department circulation of a notice of sudden, copy of EAF and a copy of the applications they identified involved in interested agencies.
Second. Moved and seconded for lead agency. Call to question, by roll call. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
I move the planning board defer further action on this application pending establishment of lead agency and direct the applicant to respond to comments and writing of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies included but not limited to the following, one through 13.
Second. Moved and seconded. Call to question, by roll call. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Good to go. Good luck. See you next time. Next up is Diamond Development, Diamond Point Development self-storage unit. I see Chris here.
My name is Christopher Lepine with the Chez &amp; Companies.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Nicholas Ward-Willis with Keen &amp; Bean, attorney for the applicant Diamond Point Development. Joined tonight by Jason Sommer, principal of Diamond Point Development, along with Aaron Sommer, also with Diamond Point Development. And on the Zoom meeting, we have our project architect, Scott Steiner of Steiner Architects. I'll do my best to keep our comments brief. I know you've had a long agenda, and you've got several behind us as well. The application before you tonight revitalizes the underutilized and dormant site, the former Ocho Restaurant. And it's a project self-storage facility that is increasingly in need, and sort of reflects the change in the environmental times with respect to sustainable development and smaller housing units, so the need for storage becomes more evident, as is also shown by the fact that you have two applications to self-storage on your, on your agenda tonight. This project serves that need that I've mentioned, and we're proposing a project that is in keeping with and complements the character of the zoning along Route, the Route 9 corridor. The project itself is located at 1998 Route 9 South Road. It's on a 2.03 acre parcel site. There will be 750 units in a climate-controlled storage facility. The zoning itself will be 55 feet tall, four stories, and approximately 22,000 square feet with a gross floor area of about 80,000 square feet. It's located in the Highway Business zoning district, where it's a, used permitted by a special use permit, and will require site plan approval and the special use permit. The special use permit has two specific criterias, one for parking and one for lighting. And the project that we're proposing has two loading spaces, nine parking spaces, and we will require two variances, one for the height in the stories and the others for the parking, whereas 45 is required, we're providing nine, and Mr. Sommer will provide you with some details as to why we need that, and based upon their experience in other facilities and other locations, nine spaces is more than sufficient and to meet the, what's required in the zoning. What I'd like to do at this point is just ask Mr. Sommer to provide you some overview of their project and their, their business model. Then I'm going to talk you through some of the other areas, buildings in the area that are complementary to the height variances that we're going to be seeking. And then Mr. Lepine is going to provide you with some more details on the site plan itself.
Okay, hi, everyone. My name is Jason Sommer. My brother, Aaron, and I develop self-storage facilities all up and down the East Coast. We grew up in Schenectady, New York, in the Capital District, and have been doing this since 2006, so we've been doing this for quite a while. We've got projects in the Capital District, we've got them in Massachusetts, Connecticut, Maine, and Georgia, various other states. The reason why we are successful in what we do in developing climate-control, Class A self-storage facilities is because we listen to the community. We go in and we try to do a project that's aesthetically pleasing, that's professionally managed, that's not maybe what you think about when you think of metal doors facing the street and something old. This is nice, new, state-of-the-art self-storage facilities. We look for communities where there's demand, unmet demand, and that's, makes sense from a business perspective. And in this community, there certainly is demand. If you go to the, there's an extra space self-storage on South Road right across the street, and this is the low season for self-storage right now. It's really a spring season, the renting season. Right now, there's no 10 by 10s available at the, at the climate control. In my world, that is the most popular unit. That is, that is the standard in self-storage facilities. So, for the, for the product, that is a high-end product, that is an aesthetically pleasing product, that is a premium product, there is an unmet demand in this, in this area. So, that's what's brought us to the area. We, again, plan to listen to the community and build something, and listen to the planning board, and listen to the staff, and bring you something that's aesthetically pleasing, that fits into what the area is looking for, and, and that's going to be an asset to the community. So, thank you.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you, Jason. What I'd like to do now, Chris, if you put this up on the screen, and before Chris goes into the details about the plan, to sort of give you an overview of the zoning in the area and how this project, we believe, fits in with that corridor. And so, what we've done is we've put together some other projects that are similar in height and scope to our building along the Route 9 corridor. And Chris is going to put that up on the, on the screen. The first slide is, Chris is just giving you the map of the comparable locations, which is the extra space facility that Jason has mentioned, located at 2169 Route 9, Hyatt Place in the Hampton Inn. And what you'll see is that the facility that we're proposing, you had seen some earlier architectural façades that our client has used in other locations, and how those will look very similar to what you're going to see on the screen here to the existing, to the existing locations.
Turn up my outlook.
Sure.
I can see it now. That was a joke. I'll leave that.
You're trying to keep it moving. I know, very smart.
Good, so, let me just walk you for a second while Chris is pulling that up. The four properties we were going to, the three properties we're going to show you was the extra space storage. As I've mentioned, our facility will be a gross floor area of about 88,000 square feet with 700 units, and is proposed to be four stories tall, which requires a variance for one story and about 10 feet in height. The extra space facility is about a third larger at 116,000, 115,000 square feet, has over 131 units more, 831 units, and it's also four stories tall. It's along the Route 9 corridor like ours. The difference between ours, and what I think is beneficial to ours, is that we have the commercial center to the north, and we don't have any residential around us. The other three facilities I'm going to mention to you, the extra space, as you, as you know, from being familiar with the project in the area, has residential behind it. And so up here, we have a comparable location slides, and that just gives you an overview of the four properties I want you to discuss. And if we go to the next one, Chris, the first slide is going to be our facility, which is 1998 South. You'll see we have a facade, a proposed running of what the architecture will look like, and we will work through that with staff as we go through this project. Some details about the project, the 700 units, the four stories, and then on the right side, an aerial map. And you'll, you're familiar with the Ocho Restaurant and where that is on this property, and that there are no residential structures nearby, and we just have the one commercial shopping center just to the, to the north with the tree line that is located there. If we go to the next slide, you'll see the extra space storage facility there, which is four stories tall, similar to what we're proposing, more units, 831, and you'll see the residential area on that top picture there where Chris is indicating, the residential area is back to the, to the east. Also, you'll notice it, it appears to be set back off of Route 9, but there's a large, as you know, frontage for Route 9 along that, along that area. The third property we wanted to bring to your attention was the Hyatt Place at 2165 South Road, which is also four stories tall, and residential nearby as well to the, to the west there, to the northwest, and also is about 60,000 square feet. If we turn to the last one, the Hampton Inn, that's at 2361 Route 9, that is actually five stories tall. And again, these are all located within a half a mile, three quarters of a mile from our facility. This also has a residential area to the, to the west, and it's 86,000 square feet, similar to ours, but it's five stories tall. And so when you go back and take a look at ours on that first page, you'll note that we're in keeping with the character of that Route 9 corridor, and that the architecture is different from what you see from, from other self-storage facilities. And Chris and our architect can go through and describe some of the other architectures. But I want to provide you with that overview as to how our site fits into the context of the zoning and the previous variances that have been granted, and the character of that Route 9 corridor, which we think complements it and adds to it, and certainly better than a dormant, underutilized site that exists there now and has existed for, for some time. And with that, Chris, I'm going to turn it over to you to walk us through the site.
Were you sure on my screen here? It was there. You lost it. There it goes.
Good, you're up.
I think Nick gave you a lot of specifics regarding the zoning associated with the parcel. I'm just going to just really discuss the general access to it, stormwater, landscaping, and site utilities. The intent of this project is to utilize the existing means of ingress that's located on the southern portion of the site. The site is generally a one-way in, one-way out. The other means of egress is on the northern portion of the site. I do understand it is in close proximity to the existing access point to the Chestnut Plaza. I did take into consideration some of the comments that we've received, and I just wanted And I just wanted to let the board know that we've been pretty proactive in addressing that and having, engaging with the fire department over a modified access for the site, which would result in just one point of access at the southern tier of the property. The site itself would have no refuse. They don't generally need refuse enclosure areas associated with the storage facility. They do generally use fifty-five gallon containers that they would pull out when needed for general trash pickup. As Nick alluded to, there's two loading spaces that are on the eastern portion of the site right here. We do have a pull-up station in the rear of this. This is to meet the firefighting needs for the project site. Without the benefit of a development to the east of this, we did think about potential screening in that area. We have shown on our plans a series of spruce trees scattered throughout that are anywhere from twelve to fourteen foot in height. So that if the future development does take place, there is adequate screening. We provided some arborites and cedars, trees along the, also along the eastern portion of the site for further screening from any potential development to the east. With regards to water and sewer, both services are available. There'd be a new master meter pit established for this facility. And the intent would be to tie into the existing sanitary sewer located on the southern portion of the property. The overall site's going to have over an acre of disturbance and will result in the need for Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. This particular project will fall under the redevelopment criteria associated with the speedies permit. And, and with relations to that, this overall project will also reduce the onsite impervious area a little, about forty-two hundred square feet. The current Ocho has a plethora of onsite parking, as it was a popular restaurant when it was open. We will utilize the northern portion of the site purely for detention of runoff. The intent here is to connect into the existing DOT drainage system. The site itself currently sheet flows into the drainage on, on Route Nine. Our preference is to capture it and directly route it into the drainage system without the need for sheet flow. And that pretty much concludes the overall site. You know, I didn't want to go too much in depth, I know you've had a long evening. So what we'd like to do now is just kind of do a brief overview of the architecture and then leave it up to you to field us with questions.
All right, thanks, Chris. So Scott, we're going to put up some architecture up on the screens, but if you're unmuted, you should be able to present to us. Thank you.
Yes, hello, this is Bernard Stern, our architecture, with the Architecture Fund working on the project. We've been doing self-storage since about two thousand and eight, and we do about fifty projects a year. In regards to this particular project, we focused on the design guidelines from the city. The first thing we focused on was preventing the appearance of a single large facade. Do you have the plans up? Do you want me to show the screen?
I'll share mine.
Okay.
There we are.
So the first thing, like I said, is the single large facade, we're trying to prevent that. We do that with a series of offsets and facades, particularly along the West Street on South Street and along the South elevation. We'd like to complement that by doing contrasting colors. So we have kind of the darker in the front and the lighter in the back that gives a nice offset and helps that. The second thing we worked on is the windows. In the guidelines, there were requests that there would be windows and all facades. We also went ahead and had a series of different types of windows, some large, some small, to kind of give the perception of having different programs to make that facade kind of break up. And the last thing we focused on was the parapets, making sure to have a different heights in the parapets. So that again, we're breaking up this facade and it doesn't look like this large, single-use commercial building. If you have any other questions, let me know.
And keep in mind, you may have heard from other things, we hide all the HVAC equipment if anything's underruled. All right, thank you. That's the end of your presentation.
That concludes our presentation. We'd welcome comments and questions from the board. Thank you.
We'll move on to Kristen for her comments from the department.
Thank you for an overview. It's pretty thorough, so it makes my job easy. So I'm just going to review again, it's on for, the application is on first appearance. It's on for seeker review, special use permit review, and site plan review, and of course, architectural review. You'll notice under my seeker review, in my recommendation, I've identified this as an unlisted action subject to a coordinated review. I am recommending that the planning board discuss the scale and scope of the project this evening. You'll notice that in terms of the actual motions or resolutions for your consideration, you can either defer the application with comments or if you feel comfortable enough with the project as proposed, we can go ahead and circulate for the agency intent. Doesn't really make sense to go ahead with a seeker or the agency intent if you are expecting to request changes or significant or substantial changes to the scale and scope of the project. A lot of S's in that. Okay, so I am requesting a couple of comments be, or changes be made to the AF. They were minor enough that I didn't think that it warranted a resubmission for circulation. We can get that for our project record. However, I did want to point out that as part of your map or summary report, we did acknowledge or note that, or took note that SHPO would have to be consulted as the project site was located in or flagged for being located in or adjacent to an archaeologically sensitive area. So we will want to seek consultation from SHPO identifying one way or the other. You might already have that.
We've already initiated it.
Great, that, well, that's a good thing, because you know, it does, it's a process. As was already mentioned, there are a couple of standards required for special use permit review, in particular, the lighting, which I have, you know, full confidence that regardless, we would be able to make the lighting specs work on the site, whether it was shielded or otherwise. Ultimately, that's enforceable beyond site plan approval anyway by our zoning administrator, so that's good. The parking was a concern. I do think that, you know, the planning board again should consider having that conversation. Obviously, there were statistics presented to you this evening. This would be the time to be getting some information about that. Although I believe in this instance, where in some instances, the planning board actually has purview over the number of spaces required or could, you know, grant leniency. There, in this particular case, the zoning board would actually have to make that determination.
Kristen, if I can interrupt you for a moment, would it be possible just to kind of discuss the parking and kind of give you a little overview based on?
Sure, I'm just going to wrap up real quick. And then, so there's just a number of sites, you know, design standards that I've identified that you'll just run through. Some may not even apply to the site specifically, but we are, we do pull them out for our code language, for your reference, to go through and make sure that you are hitting on all of those items. I did want to also point out a couple of other things. One, we do have Andy Learn from Engineering here who's reviewed the project. We also have Mark Pacharo on the line, who is our traffic engineer and has reviewed the project. We are aware that the project will have to be reviewed and ultimately approved for any access changes from Department of Transportation. And also, there was a revised memo that was crafted today by our zoning administrator and circulated today. Some updates and additional information required about just the building heights, just wanted some clarification about that. I will also point out that I think that the eleven by seventeen renderings were circulated to the planning board and some staff, but I don't know that they made it into the large plans. So that's why there are some comments that might have, might be confusing why I'm pointing out we don't have anything. So I, I think that could have just been a filing thing. I don't know if they were missed on our end initially or otherwise, but that's okay if those things happen. And we'll make sure everyone has the information that they needed.
Clarify that in future.
Yep.
Thank you.
That's it.
I mean, parking, we're going to be taking a look at, because, you know, other storage units in the area have, you know, a lot more parking. And I can't say what's utilized or not, but, but they're closer to code than, than you're proposing. So we'll hear what you have to say and.
Sure, sure. Well, we've built, we've built four in the last year, and each of them has between six and ten parking spaces. And they're, they're this type of self-storage, they're the type that are the multi-level climate-controlled self-storage, not the kind that you pull your car up to the doors. We, we average between ten and fifteen trips a day. So think of the restaurant, how much traffic there was there. There's very, very, very little traffic at a self-storage facility like ours. So the, the actual parking of six spaces is more than adequate. I don't remember the exact number we had here. Nine. But again, and we can show you images of that, we put one up there. This is our, this is one that we've done in, over the last, we delivered it a year ago in Georgia. That has six spaces. It's a little bit larger, it's a hundred thousand square feet. This one we're proposing is roughly eighty-eight thousand square feet. But six is more than ample for the, the traffic that we're having. Nine is, nine is fine, should be fine.
That includes the handicapped as well, so it's really.
It, it does, it does. And we're happy to show you what we've done in those others, and we've done some, we've got some analysis of how many trips a day that we do, actually in our existing properties. So happy to show, share that with the board and.
That would, that would be helpful, I think.
We, we also have obviously the two loading spaces as well. You know, it.
Yeah, in the back there.
You know, one of the other opportunities we have here in terms of this site is in the rear of the facility.
Chris, can you get?
One of the opportunities we have for, if, if, if the board has a concern about the parking is in the rear of this project site here, we do have the ability to landbank some parking as well, if that's something that would alleviate some concern. As indicated, as a, as a, Jason's the owner, I'm not, of, of the facility. I don't think he would come before the board and ask for less parking if he actually needed more parking to operate his business. So that's something that should be taken into consideration here. Normally, you have people asking for more parking than what's necessary, and this is a little bit different in this case.
People don't spend a lot of time at self-storage. They come in, they drop their things off, they leave, they come in, they pick their things up, they leave. It's usually a somewhat of a quick process, and it's not a high-turn facility, or any of our facilities is not high-turn.
Yeah, I understand. I just want to make sure we don't overdo it, but don't, under park it as well.
I understand.
And it's definitely important to note too, in your findings that you would be providing for review, I think just considering the snow storage component or the watch snow event, if it's a twenty-four-seven facility or not, certainly don't want park, or cars parking along the access aisles, anywhere or drive aisles because of emergency access. So, and again, I'm sure you have numbers and all of that, but the planning board also has to balance that, those means as well.
I understand. And just, just for the record, we do not do twenty-four hour access for our facilities. So the office hours are normal nine to five office hours, and then we have extra, extra hours, but till ten o'clock at night. We don't find anything really good ever happens at, after, after ten o'clock at night, so.
I think all spaces, same hours, that kind of thing.
Yeah.
Close is at ten. All right, we go to Andy for.
You know, as Chris noted, a SWIP, a Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan will be required for this project. I do want to note that because this, this site is an archaeologically sensitive site, we will need that clearance letter before the project can gain coverage on the speedies permit.
Correct.
Doesn't mean you can't move forward with the design of the SWIP, but we will have to have that.
You need a no-impact letter to come from SHPO.
Correct. So I just wanted to mention that to make sure everybody's aware of it. Just regarding the building height, I just want to point out a couple of things for the board's edification. As far as the, I know you, you mentioned talking to the fire department about adjusting the northern access to maybe make it a single, single point of access. I just want to point out that the, the way that the site is graded right now, on the north end of the site along Route Nine, there's about twelve feet of exposed foundation indicated. Is that going to change with the, with the future design?
It, it may decrease somewhat, because we have the ability to grade that more and come down on a steeper slope. Because right now, we're trying to create an accessible slope for a fire truck. But we will have some exposure on that foundation. We've talked about it internally as a team. The intent is not to leave that as a concrete facade. It would get some sort of a treatment to it, something that make, maybe mimics the brick or other materials that are on the building itself, but not to leave it as exposed because it is, it is along the Route Nine corridor.
Right, right, okay. So, so that being said, I think the board would benefit from either revised elevations or a rendering that, that would kind of show how the, the building is going to look from Route Nine. I think that would help with their analysis of the building and the site grading. Architecturally, it's not really my, my, my bailiwick, but I do want to point that out with, with respect to the site grades itself. As far as the southerly site access, currently it does appear to be a shared, a semi-shared access with the property to the south. I think it would be wise to consider a common access or easement agreement with that southerly property to, to help with future access and potentially limit the number of curb cuts on Nine. And to, to maintain the existing relationship, if there is one. And then the only other question I have, and it's really a, a technical detail. As far as the, the sanitary sewer connection that's shown, it's a little unclear. There's two existing sewer manholes. Appears maybe you're going to replace one of them.
Yes, we're going to replace one of them at the, the first one, the southern one.
At the bend.
In order to achieve the necessary invert elevations in order to cover on the sanitary sewer pipes.
Okay, so you are, so you are planning gravity flow, you're not intending any kind of pump, okay.
There's two pumps that tie into that one manhole right now, so we would rather, we'd prefer not to.
Agreed, yes, okay.
I, I do want to say something though with regards to the easement, and maybe this is something we can get some clarification from the board. Obviously, I think everybody's aware the adjoining properties involve litigation. I doubt we're going to be able to secure any sort of easement with the neighboring property. Would it be acceptable that at that time, that that project comes before the board, we would then engage in discussions about a common access easement? Because I don't think we're going to be able to do that right now. Actually, I can guarantee you, we're not going to be able to do that right now.
All right.
I think that would be something worth considering.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's all I have, thank you.
All right, thanks, Andy. Just want to clarify, Chris, so we were discussing this, the, the north exit there. I mean, it's been an issue for years of site distance. Just coming out of there, you know, whenever I went to the restaurant, coming out of there today, I'm looking back at topography and phone, and utility poles and, and the curvature of Route Nine, it's, it's really bad. So are you, so are you trying to propose to, to remove that north entrance or?
Yes, so.
So you, you'd eliminate a lot of paving you'd have to do as well.
I would, so just to kind of give you a brief, if you don't mind me using a couple of SketchUp tools here just to show you what I'm going to do.
I mean, it opens the opportunity for more landscaping maybe in front or.
Here's my drawing tool here. So the intent would be, we would probably end the road somewhere around here, about the midway point of the building. This, the access drive in the back would, would get, would expand for fire truck access because they have to have access along two sides of your building.
Yes, that's, that was my.
This building being sprinkled, we would be able to get, and George, Finn, and myself were talking about this earlier today. We've got to get a point where we can get within each local, there has to be no more than three hundred feet of distance to get to a side of the building from, from this point to this point. So we were discussing this today, we're pretty close when we get to about a hundred and fifty-five feet along the front of the building and extending this driveway in the rear.
Okay.
So, and this goes back to what Andy was saying, now I don't have to have such.
You don't have to, you don't have to do that drop-off and expose the foundation and all that.
And one of the things that we're being required to do on this side is we, we have about a twelve or thirteen percent slope that ties into Route Nine right now. And we have to bring that to a three percent, so that's what's creating that.
Yeah, right.
Greater cut on that side that you're seeing. So yeah, we would be able to certainly dress this up with more landscaping. As you can see, we put in some ten to twelve-foot maple trees over here to try to provide some screening. But this was a little bit of a difficult point for us.
Yep, that, that sounds terrific.
Can I ask a quick question on this topic? If you were to do that, do you lose your landbanking space?
No, one, one of the things I was thinking about for any additional parking was in the back here.
Oh, okay.
That we could do some landbanking here.
I mean, that was another thought I had, was some parking, parking in front, even if it's parallel or whatever.
Yeah, you know. Yeah, you know, we, we have this area here, it's, it's, it's rock.
Yeah.
It's particular location, so we're really limited what we're doing with the landscaping, where we did have some soil. We proposed some trees and shrubs, and we're gonna do some grass here. I didn't wanna add any more impervious area in the front, so that's why we thought the land banking in the back would be a better idea.
All right, thanks for the discussion. As I move on with the comments from Mark of the traffic.
Yep, good evening. I guess you stole one of my comments, but to begin, I did, I did have some comments. To begin, the EAF just shows the incorrect number of trips based on I T E. It looks like there was a mistake of just the calculations. It looked like it was done based on the footprint and not the total building area. And then, yes, did ask, you know, provide supportive materials for the parking variance that's being requested, but obviously, that's under the zoning board's purview. And then, there was, looks like there was maybe one or two signs that were missing, some of the signed designation numbers. And then, the one-way circulation would probably likely need some additional signs during entries and one ways to clarify to the drivers which ways that they are allowed to go. You know, provide radiies onto the site plans, provide intersection and stopping sight lines following ASHTO, based on the, show them on the plans in their entirety. Like Chairman had stated, there are some site distance constraints with regards to the north access, just topography and some other items, too. Some cleanup items and the turning analysis. And then, yeah, so the Route nine is obviously controlled in, under the jurisdiction of New York State DOT, and so they do have the requirements as far as driveway location and, and radii location. So, that would probably need to be looked at as far as locations. I don't know, we're talking about this alternate driveway, which is, appears to be okay with those locations. And the last comment was just talking about considering just a single full movement driveway instead of the one ways. You know, you get greater pervious area, and you could potentially hold off any driver confusion related to the one-way circulation. So, those, those are really my comments. The other thing is, I, this is more Andy and the fire department, but I don't know if you need to look at, you know, fire access, maybe on the side of the building, is it something like grass paved can be used, or something like that where it's pervious, but, you know, allows for fire truck to, to drive over it. But that would be under, you know, fire department's review and if they're acceptable to that.
And don't worry, George is listening and.
All right.
All right, thanks, Mark.
You're welcome.
Let's go around the board for comments. Peter?
Really, my only comment is regarding the, the building height. If we're gonna get a, a site rendering and as an elevations rendering, that'd be very helpful, because you have a fifty-five foot high building. Add that to fourteen feet elevation from the road, you have almost seventy feet in building height, and the building is fairly close to the road. So, at this point, I think that's a, that's a, it's a, that's a matter of concern, at least as far as I'm concerned. Thanks.
It'd be good to get, good to get a view from Route nine itself, not just an elevation of the building.
Sure.
Some kind of rendering. Go on, Peter.
All right, that's all I have.
Okay, thanks. Ben, anything?
I have nothing.
All right, Nicole?
Yeah, I mean, I think we need to look at the parking. I see what you're saying. However, we might have to add a couple of parking spaces there, so we might have to look at land banking some parking. I'm sure you received all of the fire department comments, and you said that you met with the fire department, but I just wanna reiterate, they had noticed that some landscaping was possibly impeding or obstructing some fire department connections. So, just make sure that those are clear, and there's no landscaping that's obstructing that area.
Certainly.
Where is the trash enclosure, enclosure or the refuse area on here?
There will be no outdoor refuse enclosure?
At all.
At all. They, they normally use fifty-five gallon containers that they put out when it is trash pickup day, similar to a residential home. They don't generate a, a lot of refuse with this type of facility.
So, so customers don't create anything, it's carry-in, carry-out?
It's carry-in, it's carry-in, carry-out. They're not allowed to use the, the trash receptacle.
Okay. All right, and I think that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Nicole. Rocco?
I wanna add my voice to the, to the need for the elevations, because that, even now, where that abandoned building is, it, it does stand out. And even as, as Peter said, I mean, that fifty-five feet on top of a fourteen, that's, that's clearly a concern. The other is really the, the exit on the north end, if you can eliminate that, because that is always is an excitement, trying to get out of there into Route nine, because even though the speed limit is forty-five, nobody goes forty-five.
True.
And then, if you can't see 'em coming, it's, it's very thrilling.
But not in the good way. All right, thank you. Yes, all right, thank you.
All right, thanks, Rocco. And Bob?
The, I think you said you're gonna remove the north exit, right?
That is what our goal is. That's where the direction we're moving in.
Okay, because I, you know, I agree with prior comment, but that, that's always a night and hour, and just a couple hundred feet north of that exit is an entrance going into the plaza right next door. So, cars who run a turn are gonna be slowing down. It just makes it a lot more difficult to get out there. I think anything you can do to bypass that would be excellent. And I don't know if you covered it, maybe I just missed it. Snow removal or storage up there, where is that gonna take place?
We have area in this location here for snow removal that could be stored. We can also store some snow out here in the front area in the grass, where it's predominantly rock that we're gonna get some vegetation established over.
All right.
Okay. All right, that's all I have. Thanks.
Thanks, Bob. Joe?
Does the applicant develop these properties and then own them, or you develop them for resale?
We own them, but we have them professionally managed. So, this is not a mom-and-pop operation. We will bring in a national manager with, you know, landscaping processes, lands, management processes, cleanliness processes. That's important to us, so.
Okay, and then my only other comment was just to make sure, since it is an abandoned building, that it's locked and secured, so that it doesn't invite folks going into the property if the doors aren't secure, in present state.
I believe it is, but we will confirm that. That's a very good point.
There's a lock on the front door anyway, I noticed.
Yeah, there's a back door as well.
Make sure, okay. We don't, we don't want anyone, obviously, going in there for many, many reasons, so.
All right, thanks, Joan. Yeah, I had a few comments. I mean, it is an old building that goes back to at least the forties or fifties. So, maybe asbestos in there. I don't know when they renovated it to the restaurant in the early eighties, if that became taken care of at that time or not, but something to look out for.
Okay.
And I wondered, where are the entrances to the building? 'Cause it looked like in rendering, it's on the east, on the west elevation, there's an entrance, but there's no.
So, well, the, we're gonna be possibly modifying the entrances based on our recent discussions with the fire department. There will be an entrance here on the south side.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to relocate the entrance on the west side of the building. We were talking about having at least two Knox Box locations, so that's something that I'm gonna have to coordinate with the architect.
My, my concern with the west side, the west building, was I didn't see a sidewalk, or maybe it is on there. Going up to, you know, it was just the road going up in front of the building in the current plan. But it looks like you got, taking care of that. Landscaping we talked about. There's a, an old fence on the retaining wall on the north side. Is that your fence or the other parcels' fence?
Oh, that is the other parcel.
The other parcels, 'cause that's kind of a disrepair a little bit. But there shouldn't be nobody over that way, I guess, to fall off the wall. That's my.
I'd hope not.
Safety.
There's no storage permitted there.
And you mentioned arborvitae along there. I, you know, I think it's a fairly big, there's probably deer on that thing, and that, so you may wanna think of something else besides arborvitae. I think Peter has mentioned in the past that that's a deer candy.
Candy canes.
And what are you planning for signage? Just on the building, or you, or you got a monument sign or something?
Pretty much.
Chris, have we looked, I don't, I don't even know if we have the signage planned yet.
We haven't gotten to signage detail.
We haven't gotten to, but we will conform to the, the requirements.
We don't like to see new pole signs, pylon signs.
I think the intent was to have a, a monument sign and a.
The name of the facility along the western side.
Yes, that's correct.
And just something regarding the, the existing OSHA building, there's some, there's some features in there you might wanna sell or get to a yard, you know, one of those yards that sells old fireplace mantles and that kind of thing. I know, I know that from the, the owner that created OSHA, the chef hand carved the, that whole front door thing, and that might be something you could sell, or.
Maybe incorporate it somehow in something.
Or incorporate it somehow as an entrance, whatever, whatever works, but there are some features in there that may be.
Okay.
Saveable versus scrapped.
It's a good idea, thank you.
And that's all I've got now. Thanks.
I move the planning board defer further action on this application.
Also, I, yeah, you'll, you'll need to discuss whether or not you feel comfortable initiating the seeker process. I mean, realistically, that's just for the planning board to be lead agency and, and be lead agency and serve as lead agency for the environmental review.
I guess, I guess since they're making some significant plans, changes to the plans, we.
I would defer to counsel, honestly. Lisa, if, if you have any thoughts about the subject.
Should we go for lead agency, or, 'cause I don't wanna circulate plans that are not, that still have a lot of work to do on.
Right, I mean, my preference would be to wait to circulate for lead agency, but you know, there, I don't see, if we circulated now, you would just, you'd have to recirculate the plans once the revised plans come in.
Yeah.
That being said, I don't know that the building is changing, the location of the building is changing much, it's more access, et cetera. And I don't know whether that would change anyone's concerns with whether they are deferring to the plan. I don't think anyone will step in and also want to be lead agency or challenge the planning board for lead agency. So, if you do circulate now, it does start the clock and, you know, facilitates the process later on.
So, we would respectfully, respect and appreciate if you could circulate your intent to be lead agency. You know, the, the nature of the variance, the nature of the, the issues are not going to change, but it's the height of parking, the building is going to not, we've talked about some modifications that are gonna lessen impact, such as removal of the access on the north side. So, I think in terms of getting comments now from other interested agencies would be beneficial. So, I think it was a good benefit to this project to declaring your intent to be lead agency tonight, so the process can continue to move along.
Certainly don't have a legal object to doing that, that's.
Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Lisa.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. All right, let's start again. I move the planning board to clear its intent to be lead agency to coordinate the environmental review of the proposed project as an illicit act, authorize the planning department circulation of a notice of said intent dated December sixteen, twenty twenty-one, a copy of the AAF and a copy of the application to the identified interested involved agencies.
Second, moved in seconded for lead agency. Call the question by roll call. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes seven to zero.
I move the planning board defer further action on this application pending establishment of a lead agency and direct the applicant to respond to comments and writing of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies included, but now limited to the following, one through twelve.
Second, moved in seconded. Call the question by roll call. Peter?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes seven to zero. All right, thanks, guys. Good luck.
I'd also like to piggyback what David had said earlier regarding Carol. You know, I'd just like to thank you on behalf of the Chasing Companies. You've already been very courteous, professional, and respectful, and willing to go out of your way, regardless of the time of day, to assist, whether it's us or a member of the community. And sometimes we didn't thank you enough, but I'd like to say thank you. Thank you from my heart, for all you've done for us and for all you've done for me. Enjoy your retirement, it's well-deserved. And members of the board, have a happy holiday and a happy new year.
Happy holidays, you.
Happy holidays, thank you.
Same to you guys. Take care, Chris.
Ready to see it.
It's getting too real.
Yeah, the board's gonna kinda fall apart after Carol leaves.
Seriously.
I, I thought I told you that Jay did not accept your resignation. I don't understand what's going on.
All right, speaking of self-storage.
Well, it's self-storage night.
Self-storage.
On behalf of rental properties, I think Carol's retirement should be rejected. She's an asset to the town, I think we should keep her.
Yeah.
Moved in seconded.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Frank Rettle. I'm the project manager for Guardian Self-Storage. With me this evening is Kelly Rettle-Hardisty. She's the managing member of Guardian Self-Storage. And Chris Lapine, I think is just hanging out. That was his seat from the last application. We're here to present a proposed plan. We're seeking site plan approval and a special use permit for a self-storage facility to be located at twenty-dish fifty Love Road in the county of Kipsey. Love Road is a little-known and used road off of Burnett Boulevard in the part of the town. It's Zone BH. Our proposal is.
And you might have to hit this, you might have to hit the switch on that and give it just a second or two, and then it should be good. Thanks.
Our proposal, this is Love Road coming up. Our proposal is to erect an approximate seventy-one thousand square foot climate-controlled self-storage building. Love Road is a state public highway. It's very, it's used seldom. I think the only people that really use this now are people that access the rail trail that adjoins our property. Several years ago, the county approached us and asked for an easement to allow people to park along Love Road here, so they could walk over to the rail trail. We donated that easement to the, to the county. This site improvement will not affect that whatsoever. Briefly, the town, the property is serviced by water, sewer, gas. There's stormwater drainage from the state on there. Our plan is to connect to the existing utilities on the property. Access to the property will be in Love Road, and we plan on two, two ways to get into the building. One is from Love Road at the cul-de-sac, and another way is we're going to be cutting an extra drive in at the lower end of Love Road. We're showing eighteen parking spaces, three handicapped, and two loading zone. And we'll talk about parking. I know parking's been a popular topic with self-storage facilities. Architecturally, this is what we envision it to be. We tried to keep within the spirit and the tent of the town code by not having a rectangular box. We tried to make it look like there are recesses in the building, changes of color, and actually, we're quite proud of the way that would look, designed that way. Parking, we've got fourteen facilities now, and Kelly has not only forty years' experience in the self-storage field, but she's also held state and national board positions. At the risk of sounding biased, I consider Kelly an expert in the field of self-storage. We can, I can say with certainty that a strict application of the parking regulations under the code are not really needed. We're showing eighteen spaces. We're showing 18 spaces for 71,000 square feet. Based upon our other facilities, we may see 10 to 12 cars a day. We've tried to provide ample parking for that with 18 parking spaces. There's going to be 10 on top, eight below, with another handicap down here, two handicapped up here. There'll be a loading zone off of the cul-de-sac and another loading zone off the bottom driveway. We feel that's sufficient parking for that size facility. We're not going to have any outdoor storage. In other words, people are not going to be parking RVs there over the winter or something like that. We got rid of that with all of our facilities. It's a hassle and quite frankly, it's unsightly. Everything will be indoors. We're not showing a garbage enclosure because similarly, we don't encourage our, our customers to leave any garbage. Carry-in, carry-out. We do provide garbage for our office staff. There'll be an office inside, there'll be a bathroom inside, and they'll just roll out the container on garbage pickup. That's sort of it in a nutshell. If I can, I do want to add, we did receive a lot of comments from the town's consultants and an updated one from the zoning administrator today. We fully intend to address all of those next time we're before you. Realistically, I think we'll be back at the February meeting, not the January meeting. I'll be happy to entertain any questions or listen to any comments that any board member may have or any consultants.
If I could add one thing to that, this project area is under an environmental easement that we're working on behalf of with the DEC in concert with this plan. They will be having an intricate part of the review process as it relates to the interior construction of this in terms of ventilation for this building. There are areas that are identified on our plans as AOC, which stands for area of concerns. In those particular areas, during the course of construction, we would be required to have an environmental monitor on-site witnessing the excavation in that area. That material doesn't necessarily have to be removed from the site. It could be placed back on the site as long as two conditions are met. Condition one is you put at least two feet of soil material and a barrier layer over it identifying, it's a cover for it. It could also be placed beneath a impermeable surface such as a pavement, where it's placed beneath a pavement, it only needs to have one foot of cover. Right now, our initial determination is that we will not need to remove any material from the site, but we'll need to properly manage the material within the area of concern during the course of construction. We have not located any stormwater facilities in terms of bio-retention areas or forbays within the areas of concern. So we've taken that into consideration. We, when we started this application in 2004, that was a comment back then, and still being with Chazen, I remembered it. So we took that into consideration as we developed these plans.
Thanks for adding that, Chris.
Is that when I was 2004? Okay.
That was the last time we were before you for this application.
Was that 2004?
Trying to remember when, when you came in to remediate the.
It was.
2017, we came in for the land contour change. 2004 is when we first came for the climate-controlled storage facility here.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Then we abandoned those plans.
Came back.
Yeah, yeah, actually, I'm old enough to know that this part of Duchess Turnpike is called Brickyard Hill. And before the state did any expansion to 44, there used to be a gas station here. You may recall Love Oil used to have some large containers there.
I remember their tank and their trucks.
The contamination was petroleum-based. We re, we applied to and were accepted into the New York State Brownfield Program. Chazen Engineering, Chris Lepine and his colleague Arlet Saint-Romaine in the Albany office did all of our brownfield work. We went through extensive testing, digging, removing, monitoring, all of which led to the issuance of a certificate of completion by the state of New York. We obtained that certificate with a characterization of restricted residential, which is the highest threshold that the state would make you go through. We wanted to have, be able to have the ability of doing residences or commercial. Commercial testing is at the lower end, residential's higher. We did the higher end of testing. So our proposed use fits in perfectly with the certificate of completion that was issued.
Not only the higher end of testing, but also the higher end of the remediation that's taken place so far on the site.
And, and the expense.
All right, I think it is a good use for the site where you'll have low traffic volume to this little cul-de-sac up the hill and.
Correct.
All right, we go to Kristen for.
Well, they did such a great job again that I don't really need to say much else, but it's first appearance on for seeker review. In all likelihood to establish lead agency intent this evening, special use permit review, site plan review, floodplain development permit review, which was acknowledged by our floodplain administrator now. So that will be an additional, additional layer of review, though I don't think it'll be too cumbersome because the building itself isn't falling within the floodplain, both the access. And then of course, architectural review. One thing I'd like to just point out as I'm looking at my old documentation here is that the classification for seeker is actually a type-one action due to proximity to the rail trail. So that was a technical procedural error that happened on my part, so I just wanted to correct that. And then, so for special use permit review, you already hit on the standards about lighting, on minimum parking, one space per 2,000 square feet. We've talked enough about parking, so I'm going to move on to some other things. There were some design standards again for storage warehouse facilities documented in the review. We've already touched on remediation, environmental easement. There was a review provided by Carol Knapp. I don't know if Carol's still on the line, but she would be able to more readily talk through her comments if she's still with us. We did have the revised comments come in from the zoning administrator today, asking or requesting some additional information as it related to the building height and just calculating variances. Anything, well, if a variance should be required. She just wants to have all the correct information in front of her to be able to give you the correct information.
Apart from the height, we do know that we'll need two variances, one for front yard, one for side yard. Assuming that we get to the point where neg deck is issued by this board, then we would make applications at the ZBA.
And, okay, yeah, Carol Knapp, and then of course Andy has, I'm sure, comments he'd like to talk through as well. I, you know, again, you provided a, an abundance of information right off the bat, so just some consultation with SHPO, US Fish and Wildlife. We're just looking for essentially anything that you can provide to us that would be like no impact or other. And I know you know to start that process sooner than later.
We made initial consultation with both agencies. And we also included in the EAF a copy of the wetland delineation report in the ETR study that was performed by Ecological Solutions. Our plans that are before you are developed in such a manner that we have no impact on the on-site wetlands. I think with regards to the potential for Indian at bats, we do have clearing restrictions on our site. It's predominantly for any of the trees located on the western portion of the property here. And we are, we've indicated those restrictions on our plans as they are.
Sure, perfect. And then, you know, I know the board might have some questions as it relates to parking or access to the rail trail and, and things of that nature, but I'll stop talking now in order to keep us moving.
Thanks, Kristen. You guys jump to Andy.
So I have a, you know, we, obviously we provided a full, full comment review. Appreciate getting the SWIP early, you know, get that review provided. We provided some comments. In general, it looks like it's in pretty good shape. So we appreciate that. The only thing I really want to mention, and, and we talked about this early on, and I just want to mention it again, is about the layout of the parking on the upper level along the cul-de-sac. It's not really typical to have a parking right off the end of the cul-de-sac where vehicles would have to maneuver within the right-of-way to access those parking spaces. So there's that issue, and then there's also the issue of snow storage for the cul-de-sac when, you know, by the town and what happens to that snow. So that becomes a complicating factor with this layout. Typically, we would require a separate, channelized entrance to a facility like this. Granted, it's a relatively low-volume road, although I do understand that, you know, it is used for access to the trail, so there is some, some usage there. Just something that I think we should, the board should consider, the town should consider as far as the layout is concerned and if there's anything we can do to kind of address that.
And interestingly enough, I just wanted to point out that Mark Pfeifer, our highway superintendent, did review the plan set and had no comments, but of course, we could always help facilitate just to make contact and, and confirm that there are in fact no concerns.
Yeah, I, I think this is unique in such a manner because we own the property immediately adjacent to the cul-de-sac. There's no additional right-of-way associated.
Actually, we own both sides of Love Road.
They, they own both sides, not I. I'm just the applicant engineer. So, but, you know, we, we've talked about parking tonight in depth. You talked about it with the vast application of maybe perhaps not having enough parking. We've talked about storage-type facilities maybe not needing as much parking. One of the things that could possibly be considered is the parking on the southern end of the site. If the board's inclined to acknowledge that these types of facilities don't need as much parking as, as needed, there'd be the opportunity to possibly reduce some of that parking in minimizing amount of movements that fall into the cul-de-sac. Unfortunately, any sort of parking associated with this, there is going to be a maneuvering into the cul-de-sac area. Fortunately enough, it is the cul-de-sac. It's the end of the roadway. It's, it's only utilized right now for rail trail. It's not utilized for any commercial access. The intent of this application is a very low impact, as Frank earlier mentioned, 10 to 12 trips per day. And remember, these 10 to 12 trips are going to be spaced between the upper level and the lower level depending on where your units are. So that could possibly be a split of five to six. So I don't think the overall traffic associated with this particular project is going to lead to any areas of concern for cars coming in and out, backing in and out during the course of the day. Plus, this is not a 24-hour operation here either, so these movements are taking place mostly during the day type situation. Something to consider for the board.
Yep. All right, thanks, Chris. Anything else, Andy?
No, I think that's all I, I have right now. Okay, Carol, you online still?
Yes, I am here. Thank you.
We have your letter?
Yes, and Chris, you, you covered most everything. I guess my question was, the, the plan shows AOC too, that area of concern too. Is that the only area on-site that is currently under the easement or how, how does that work? I've not been able to get a copy of, of the environmental easement from DEC. Perhaps you could provide that, provide a copy of that to the town as well.
I'll be, well, we, we attached a copy to the application, but I'll be happy to send you a copy, Carol.
Okay. There was, there was some limited information, but there, there should have been some additional detail as far as, you know, what was done. And like I said, is, is that AOC too? Is that the only portion of the plan that is currently, has the, the two-foot restriction? Because it appears at the center of the stormwater, the basins will be at least two feet or one foot below the existing grade. So, you know, that, that two foot of cover then goes away. So is that part of this?
The stormwater.
Yeah, the stormwater basins are located outside of those areas of concern.
Okay, so those, those two areas are the only ones where the environmental easement is, is still in effect?
Applicable, yeah. Applicable for this project, correct.
Okay, I, I guess that wasn't really clear in, in, in what was provided. So again, if you could just provide the town with additional information, or just give me a call and we can discuss it a little bit. I'd appreciate that. And keep us informed of what the DEC is saying.
All right, thanks, Carol. This time we'll go around the board for additional comments. Start with Joan's turn.
I guess a question I have is with the backing up into the cul-de-sac, would it be, do we need clearance from the town highway or the state DOT? This is a state highway, like to say.
It's a town road.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Actually, I think it's a state highway maintained by the town.
Oh, really?
Yeah, the state of New York owns that. Interesting. I don't know why they still want to keep owning it, but they do.
So, yeah, that was just my only.
I think a portion of it is.
So what, how would that answer Joan's question?
Well, because it doesn't. She had spoken to the highway superintendent today.
Well, no, he provided comments that no comments, yeah.
So I was just wondering, is he the one who needs to make a final determination or would it be somebody at the state DOT?
I guess we need confirmation on the roadway ownership. I was under the impression that a portion of the road was maintained by DOT, but maybe I'm wrong there.
I think.
Because Mark's usually not shy about telling me, hey, we don't do anything with respect to this road.
I think Mark offered his comments because he's the one in charge of taking care of the road. They do the snow plowing.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I know there's instances of that on Main Street, so sure.
Yeah, so I mean, as long as whoever is the appropriate person to say yea or nay says yea, you know, the parking would work.
We're, we're subject to a DOT permit here. This road is under the land, uh, ownership of the state of, of New York. In order to connect into their drainage system and in order to modify their pavement, we have to obtain a DOT permit for this.
All right. Rocco? One comment to, to continue here with this, this cul-de-sac. Site here. Your loading dock acts says is the, the cul-de-sac, if I'm not mistaken.
There's one there and one at the lower balcony.
The one on the cul-de-sac site, I do use the rail trail and there are a lot of times when, there are quite a few cars around there that are parked. Now, not, now, what's the average size of the vehicle that comes in there for the loading docks and will that be an issue with those cars there? Because I, I've been there where I was the only car when I arrived and then when I left, all around the cul-de-sac was taken care of. And then that might also take away some spots where you've got your parking. So I don't know how that will impede that. You might have to take a look at that. Yeah. Rocco? If I could refer you to sheet C190?
Of our plan set.
Okay.
We, we, that specific concern that you raised, we reviewed. There are cars that are parked parallel to Love Road there for rail trail. We showed you the movements with the WB40 trucks. They don't, this type of facility does not get your tractor trailer WB70s.
Right, okay, but they work then, okay.
Yeah, so we must have missed that. We, we showed that. You probably flipped through the pages and you seen the emergency plan and tucked in the one corner, we had WB40s. So we probably could have been a little bit more clear on that, but that, that is in the files.
I'll make one more comment too. This is small units, you know, typically, no one's going to fill a five-by-five up with a tractor trailer. They, they, they're just not there a lot.
Okay, so, so getting back to my other comment where your parking spaces are, how many, how many spaces will they take away on the cul-de-sac for people accessing?
I don't think there is any parking over there.
No, there isn't.
I know there isn't. I think it's, I'm going to just show you.
I think it's, I think it's striked going down Love Road, not on the cul-de-sac.
Could you grab a microphone, please? Just, thanks.
You're not supposed to.
Just for our folks out on Zoom land.
The first number. Striping is going down the.
I think. I think, I think the parking starts someplace up through here.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it might even be down there.
The space is delineated on the road.
Yeah.
Well, they're kind of faded.
People pay attention.
Right, but they're getting faded.
On our existing conditions plan that we provided, and it just happens to be that the layer's turned off, all the parking is delineated along Love Road here.
Yeah, so the point is just they have a concern with the fading of the, the paint on the roadway. So I think the conversation with DOT, indoor highway department, indoor also, will make sure that it's clearly delineated.
Sounds like it's a county issue as well because it's parking to the county.
So we'll just get everybody involved.
I didn't mean to open a can of worms here, but I haven't been there and seeing the cars there.
Just so you're aware, Carol's still retiring regardless of this.
Carol, want to, want to paint some stripes on there?
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for the clarification. Okay, thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Anything else, Rocco?
Okay.
Bob, do you have anything?
Excuse me, got to review. I didn't want to read last some of the prior comments, but I had a question. You made a comment earlier, this is not a 24-hour operation. I don't have ever, I haven't ever used the storage facility, but does that mean that people can't get into their storage unit whenever they want? They're limited by certain hours?
Yes, they are limited. We have an outside, we have outside key access or code access, and we open at a certain time in the morning, maybe seven o'clock. And I agree with the other advocate, nothing's happening good in there after ten o'clock at night. Ours can close earlier unless you have some kind of a special use or if you're considered at a commercial level, and you're one of those people that's got to get in to get something earlier in the morning. But I don't want to deal with it. And our office hours aren't often that long, and we just, we just don't want people coming and going like that.
Is that true with all-star facilities, or just this?
No, I think it depends. This, because this is an interior climate control property, we really just don't want people wandering the halls. And, you know, if you're outside around low-end properties, where you have a gate access, you can drive up to your unit, get in and get out, whatever. But we just don't want people wandering around. It's like an office building. I don't want people wandering around an office building tonight either.
The non-climate control buildings that you see around the county, they can generally be accessed 24 hours a day because you're just going into a gate. You put your code in, and you can go to your unit and leave. But with a building like this, we keep it secure, and it's not open 24 hours a day.
Okay.
All right, thanks, Bob. Nicole?
Yep, I only had two things ultimately about tree clearing, you know, that needs to happen between October and March.
Vats.
Indiana vats, right? And then also with the blending turtles. I saw some stuff going back and forth about turtle fencing versus slit fencing. So did you guys have any information on which way you were going to go? It looks like DEC prefers the turtle fencing. Is that correct?
They do. I think this is a bit unique in the sense that if you look to the east of us, that's where the area of concern is. We have such a great topographic change coming up to the east. We have Route 44 to the south of us.
Right.
We have another topographic challenge to the north. I think as maybe Carol may have alluded to in her comments, it's not much of a concern in terms of the blending turtles on this particular property. We'll further consult with Ecological Solutions, the project sponsors consulting on us. But I'm not sure if it's going to be necessary for this particular project.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, that's it.
Ben, do you have anything?
I think everything was covered.
And Peter?
On one thing, let's see here. The renderings don't show any roof-mounted units. Just a reminder that if there are any, that they do have to be screened.
Yes.
That's all I have.
Yep, there will be roof units, and we do plan on proper screening.
Thank you, friend.
Thank you. All right, thanks, Peter. I think we already talked about the remediation, all that, parking. I mean, you got to make sure there's no light glare, you know, people come down on 44 on the hill that they, you know.
Make sure everything is the screen for downlights.
As they're driving. Vince, in your renderings here, it looks like you've repaired the fence along with 44 and took the slabs out. So that looks, that looks good if you're going to do that.
We did. And it may be a challenge getting the state to agree to let us do it.
Yep, that's the state-owned fence, I'm assuming.
Yes, it is.
You said no RV parking, but there's no RV storage either, right?
Correct.
It's just smaller units.
Yep. All the storage is just inside the building, nothing outside.
Okay, no big doors opening up. And the last question I had was, you know, near where people were dumping there, there's a lot of cats living. Is that, are they going to be evicted?
Yeah, we're going to probably have to get a hold of some rescue outfit to try to get rid of the cats. It's not just a few cats, they have condos there. I mean, it's amazing.
I don't know how that.
Yeah, it's amazing. And I think somebody goes in and feeds them.
They do.
Oh, that's nice keeping them.
Yeah, they're all feral.
Okay, so it's not you guys doing it?
No, no. We just let things lie until we're ready to do development.
That could be your residential condo.
Only if they pay rent. Some residential condos, they're already, some storage bins. All right.
I move the planning board to declare it to be the lead agency to coordinate the environmental review of the proposed project as a Type 1 action, and authorize the planning department circulation of a notice of said intent dated December 16, 2021, a copy of the EAF and a copy of the application to the identified interested and involved agencies.
Second. Moved in second as the lead agency. Call the question by roll call. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
I move the planning board to defer further action on this application pending a solvency of the lead agency, and direct the applicant to respond to comments and writing of the planning board and those received. The town departments and agencies include the documents to the following, 1 through 14.
Second. Moved in second. Call the question by roll call. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you, everyone.
Happy holidays, happy new year.
Happy holidays.
Carol, we're going to miss you. Happy new year. See you next time in 2022. All right, next up is Duchess Center demolition plan. I see it already up on the screen. That's great.
Wasting no time.
Getting late, so I try to keep going.
Appreciate it. Had some big discussions tonight. Some new, a lot of new stuff.
All right. My name is Kevin Sanders. I'm from EBI Consulting. And we were asked by the town planner to do a site plan review for a non-typical project where we're actually demolishing buildings. And the reason for that is to get a baseline, so that you have a baseline when future development happens at this property. So I just wanted to go through what we've been, we've been discussing this with the town planner and different members of the town staff for a couple of months now, and we gutted down. And I think Eric has some additional conditions and comments that he's going to be recommending after my presentation, and we can go over that. But if you have any questions, you can stop me. So the project is 645 Duchess Turnpike on the corner of Burnett Boulevard and Duchess Turnpike. It's the old Duchess Center with the Kmart and the old ShopRite. Right now, we are currently doing abatement on the two properties, the two buildings that we are going to be demolishing, and we're going to be bringing those down to pad level. And there's going to be two buildings on site that are going to stay up. The strip mall over on here that has the errands and the old Payless shoes and the Burger King. So like I said, we've been going through different workshops with the town, and we've gone through of how we can make this site safe and secure. So after we are done the demolition, it is ready for different people to come in and look at it and potentially buy it and further develop it down the road. So some of the scope that we're going to be doing again is, right now, we're doing abatement on these two buildings. We will be demolishing these two buildings down to the pads. While we're doing demolition, they will be secured by a fence around there, so that nobody will be able to get into them. And we're also going to be providing a Jersey barrier delineation along here to force any traffic that is still going to be going through the site off of Burnett to go to the Burger King, to use this corridor that we are creating so that they're not near any of the demolition activities. So as you can see, we ran both fire trucks through the site for multiple areas. And we also showed a passenger car going through the site, so to make sure that the site can handle all the vehicles that would be using it during demolition. We also were asked by the fire department to provide four gates. So those are going to be Jersey barrier gates, and I can show you what those are going to look like in a second. But we have four. We have one off of Friendly Lane. And then we have another one over here next to the errands building. Then we have one here, which will be the main access to get into the demolition site. And then one over here on the side next to the spec building behind the Burger King. So just to let you know, let's see, we have, scroll this up a little bit, so I can show you what that Jersey gate barrier would look like. So we are in discussions with the fire department. They would like this to be increased from 12 to 20 feet. So we're going to have to look at the way we're going to have these gates look. There may be a roller in the middle, because these gates are going to be 10-foot wide versus only six. So we're looking into that. We're also looking into a lock system, which the daisy, the locks will be daisy chains for the water, sewer, and fire department to be accessed for these gates. And then there'll be a knock box on the side. Again, we're talking with the fire department right now about how exactly that's going to work, but we, it's going to be, look similar to this in the end. The Jersey barrier, the demarcation around the site will have Jersey barriers with five feet between them to make sure that there, you can walk through them, but there's no cars that can get through them around the site. And so that is pretty much it. For another, still thing, we are going to be cutting and capping all the utilities on site. We are working with the water and sewer to do that. And also, we are going to be shutting off the electric to all the buildings except for the lights. So the police department has asked us to keep the lights on. There may be a few that can be turned off, but we'll work with the police department on which ones can be shut off, so that the site is, continues to be secure. Let's see. Oh, there's one other thing. As part of this project, the town has asked to have an easement that was supposed to have been dedicated years back, but just never was recorded. So there is an easement that's going to be dedicated to the town. So we are working with the town legal counsel and along with the owner's legal counsel to get the right language and everything for this easement that's along Friendly Lane. And I could show you on the site plan, it would be over here along Friendly Lane in this green area. So I think, again, this is a non-typical site plan review, but it's, we were asked by the planner to do this to get a baseline. And we've worked several sessions with them to get the right, right stuff in the plans, so that you guys will be satisfied moving forward. So at this time, I'll open it up to questions.
All right. Thanks for your presentation. Eric?
Let's see. This plan, it's a site plan application. It is subject to seek review as an unlisted action. We did recommend that the planning board waive the public hearing for this item. As you said, it's a typical application in that it's not for development, but undevelopment.
Yep.
So with that said, the purpose of the site plan, as you mentioned, is to prepare the site for marketing, for redevelopment, which we're very supportive of. It is a change in the use of the site, it's a decrease in the usage. And there was a lot of discussion. They've been very cooperative at the meetings we've had to help develop a plan that would keep the site secure and avoid any increase in delight for the large, open, unsecured area. So thank you for that. That said, we have, there's miscellaneous comments in our recommendation. I don't think any of them are terribly controversial or critical. Just for clarification, it was a little unclear in the plans. There is a, he showed a good plan of the gate system to control access, including closing off Friendly Lane. We did suggest that that, the location of the gate there be confirmed with the town engineer and the highway superintendent, because right now it's shown on the right-of-way, which may be the best, whatever the best location is for it, it may or may not need a highway permit for displacement. That's all.
All right. Thanks, Eric. Andy, you probably have a thing or two to say about this one?
Yeah, we don't have a whole lot to say. I'll mention, I'll note that I appreciate the inlet protection shown on all the stormwater catch basins. I think that's a good plan, even though there's no soil disturbance, I think that's a good idea to try to keep all that demo out of, demo debris out of the storm system.
Somewhere or whatever.
Yep. So, you know, the only other thing, the easement that Kevin showed along Friendly Lane, that's a, that's a pretty important improvement for the town in terms of some future work that needs to be done along Tucker Drive. So that's appreciated, that we get that installed, you know, filed and available for the town's use. And then as far as the other easements on the property, it's kind of a rat's nest of easements all over the site that it's, I'm sure it was a challenge to show on the plans. And we've asked, we've asked that it kind of, appreciate that it's there and now, but we've asked that a note be added to the plan indicating that if, or when someone comes in to develop the site, that we try to do something to clean that up and make it a little clearer in terms of ownership and what's available to the town to get to those, those utilities. So other than that, I have no further comments.
All right. Thanks, Andy. I guess we'll go around the board for comments. Peter?
I don't have anything.
All right. Ben?
Just one thing. So all the parking for that errands is going to be along the side of the building there, right alongside the building?
The errands should be moving out. If they're not already out, they'll be out soon. So there will be, the only tenants on site will be Burger King.
Oh, okay. So that building will just be left as an empty building right now?
It will be left as an empty building. If we had the money, we would have been including it in this submission to get demolished as well. If we don't sell it by next year's fiscal cycle, we'll probably be coming back for that building to be done as well.
All right. Thanks. Ben, anything else?
Will there be accommodations for the Castro Road coming over there? When you build a storage building? I'm only kidding. That's it.
All right. Thanks, Ben. Nicole?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Rocco?
Nothing. Thank you.
Bob?
Nothing for me. Thanks.
Joan?
Just a quick one. How long do you think the demolition is going to take to complete?
We will, I don't really know the exact answer, because it really depends when we start it, and whether we're going to be impeded by weather, winter weather conditions, or whether we start it in the spring and we have more of an open thing. I anticipate it's going to be 30 to 60 days, in that range. I could be wrong on that. It really depends on some different things. The abatement took 60 days, so usually the demo takes about the same as the abatement, or a little bit less.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Joan.
We would like it, we would like a demo as fast as possible to get it on the market.
I'm sure. I had a couple of questions. You know, slabs are riddled with water, sewer, electric conduits, et cetera. What, you know, what's your plan for those?
So all the utilities are going to be capped outside of the building. And I can zoom up here. You can see, we're going to cut and cap the different mains, and then we're going to put the soil right back once we cap them. So any lines that go into the slab will be deadlines at that point. They'll be all capped. They'll be all capped outside, so that if somebody came in and wanted to do future, uh, development, they would just, they could tie into the, the, the lines out here that we capped, or run new lines off of the, the mains as needed.
Okay, and as you're demolishing, you'll be kind of cutting everything off at the slab level?
Yes.
Okay. Didn't have, don't have things sticking up?
No, it'll be, it'll be like, um, like a nice shrink when it's done.
And the only other question I have is, what type of Jersey barriers are you thinking of, the concrete ones or those?
We're going, we're, we're looking, we showed, um, on our plans, we showed the, um-
Well, those bright orange, plastic ones?
We're not going to use plastic, it will be some concrete that has some weight to it. This is what we're showing, uh, we also may use the, uh, four by two foot by two foot, uh, they call mafia blocks, the big, like, concrete extra blocks.
Yeah, I've seen them.
Those were, we may use those as well, um, if, if the, uh, town is okay with that.
All right. Thanks, that's it for now. Well, I guess, uh, you know, did, did the town have one, one way or the other discussion? I mean, I like to look at the triangular Jersey barriers better than the big copy blocks, but I don't know if the town had any preference.
I, I don't- Andy, I don't know if you do from, uh, I mean, I don't, I don't think we do.
From our, from my perspective, though, they're, they're equal, in, in terms of what their effectiveness.
Okay, so it's-
Andy, they both have rated slots underneath?
No, but the five-foot spacing would be adequate to, to, to handle any kind of flow that comes through there. Actually, mafia blocks may be less likely to move and, and flow, um, or tip over, but you, I mean, I don't think we're all that concerned about that.
Yep, okay, we'll just, uh, let you, uh, whenever you get your hands on it, I guess, then. That's what you're going to use.
Do you want to do this, or you want me to?
Yeah, we're going to wait. Go ahead, go ahead.
I move the planning board waive the site plan public hearing for this application.
Second. Moved in seconded, call the question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
I move the planning board undertake an uncoordinated environment review of this project as an unlisted action for a seeker review, determined that the Duchess Center demolition site plan project would not have a significant adverse effect on the environment, and that no environmental impact statement will be required for the reasons set forth in the seeker negative declaration for an unlisted action dated December 16th, 2021.
Second. Moved in seconded for seeker, call the question by roll call, Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes seven to zero.
I move the planning board grant conditional site plan approval for the Duchess Center demolition site plan project subject to the following. Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, and said response to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness of the scope and not limited to one through 10.
Second. Moved in seconded to grant conditional, call the question by roll call, Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes seven to zero. All right, good luck, guys.
Thank you very much, and have a great holiday.
Yep, have a great holiday yourself.
That's the last outing for me as well, everyone, so have a wonderful holiday.
Happy holidays.
Next up, Hudson Heritage, uh, next up, Hudson Heritage, uh, CBS is back. Thanks for hanging in, Eric.
Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Hi, good afternoon, uh, Mr. Chairman, board members, uh, again, my name is Nick Rosa with Stock Architects, we represent TM Crowley, who is the applicant on this and the developer, and also joining with me is Natalia Pelletier, who is the sign vendor from Point Up Signs. So, we are here for the building M, of course, which is the CBS. Uh, we've made some very dramatic changes in the elevation based off of the comments we received last time, both, um, via Zoom and the planning board comments. Um, the roof line has been increasing and decreasing in selected locations, um, to create a more dramatic form. Now, also, the higher parapets used to screen all of the RTUs, uh, none of the RTUs will be visible in this, um, due to the higher parapets, and also the lower parapets will be screened with smaller equipment, such in, such as, uh, condensate pumps and things like that. Uh, we've included pre-cut sails, uh, sails throughout, um, the building for, as window sails. Um, also in the brick locations, we've included a wire table, um, just to kind of mimic the building M, uh, building that has the other portion of the building, there'll be castle rock, um, this breaks up the facade, and it also matches, um, building L's material power. Um, lastly, we've included a higher pitched roof at the entrance, a minimized amount of blazing that is in that tower. Um, I know there was a technical comment asking to include the color, but this is an asphalt roof system, so it's gray, which is similar to the neighboring property. At this time, I'd like to go through some of the comments we received from the planning board, um, there weren't too many, so I hope it's brief. Uh, directions, enclosure, and gate detail, uh, detail are not consistent, um, we don't have a problem maintaining the gate detail, I mean, excuse me, the, um, gate details, um, with the opener, however, I did have a question regarding the actual construction of this. Um, we've developed this to match fairly similar to your trash enclosure detail at Hudson Heritage. Um, we did not use actual brick, but we did use the, um, the facade that we were using amongst the building, so, um, I'd like to keep this so it's consistent with the building, um, I don't think that we're able to see any other dumpster enclosures while looking at this, uh, property over here, um, however, I will, um, I will leave that to you, uh, for questions. And the other item on the planning department was the electric metering cabinet, uh, and also a note to read HVAC meters to be screened, "Shin, rooftop equipment shall be setback 10 feet minimum from roof edges." We have no problem adding that to the note, and we will happily re-submit that with the other items that will be picked up. Um, the last was given is the clarified polycarbonate of building mounted signage. Uh, Natalia, I believe you own, would you mind speaking to this, I'll go back to the elevations.
First, so our proposed, our proposal consists of five sets of internally illuminated sets of letters. They're all internally illuminated with low voltage LED to produce a glow, um, on the sign face. The signs proposed on the west elevation facing Route 9 is a drive-through pharmacy sign and a CBS pharmacy sign. On the south elevation facing the parking field, we're doing a CBS pharmacy sign and a drive-through. And on the east elevation facing Winslow Gate Road is a CBS pharmacy. Are there any questions?
That's, on the west elevation, there's basically two signs then? Because it's a drive-through, there he is. Yeah.
CBS and drive-through pharmacy signs.
Yep.
Yeah, the Duchess County Department of Planning had a comment about that.
I mean, not sure if those are needed, everybody knows you, you got a drive-through, but, um, I mean, you're going to have to go to the ZBA for variances on socks, the number of signs they have.
We will be seeking relief and zoning at a later date.
So, all right, um-
I, I just have a few more items, uh, uh, the last item on the comments was the mounting height of the lighting not to exceed 15. Our lighting will not exceed 15, and also, I did submit, um, lighting spec sheets for the final package. Uh, I just appreciate clarification on that, if you're looking for something further than what was already submitted for the rights. That is consistent throughout the development.
Eric?
Yeah, that, I think I was suspicious, the only question- The only question was, uh, the mounting height, and, um, actually, and since the comments were issued, I guess, um, we'd also appreciate just knowing if the lenses on the proposed lights are clear, which could cause glare, or if they are frosted, or, or are they opaque or transparent?
Uh, we're even sure that they're opaque.
I mean, on the spec sheet here for the sconces, it says white glass, it looks, looks opaque.
Yep.
For example.
Um, that's, I have no further, um, anything else to add at this point, if you guys have any questions?
Uh, yeah, we'll go around the board, see if we get any comments on the architecture, um, Peter?
It looks fine.
Ben?
Looks good to me.
And, um, I think Yvonne had some kind of comments-
Just, uh, he covered both of my review, but I was going to point out that, uh, you do have some comments in your packet from the Historic Preservation Commission, in which they suggested that the board consider, um, additional banding, so as you discuss the application, you, you might also consider that.
Thanks, Eric, I was just about to mention that, I had, had it in my hand and forgot it. Uh, Yvonne suggested, uh, you know, a second weight band around as, uh, this potential Finn's bookstore is, uh, it's a part of the packet, but not an actual store, so.
Nick, has Nick seen that, uh, comment already? Nick, it was, uh, I believe Carol sent you everything going to the board, did you get a chance to look at the Historic Preservation Commission's comments?
We did review, uh, those comments, and, um, we, we are not sure that it is necessary with, uh, let me just go to the elevation. Um, so the banding that, um, was suggested, uh, kind of mimics, um, where the sign placement, and without signs being added at those locations, it almost looks like the building is a little bare, um, however, if the board feels inclined to add banding at those locations, um, uh, we will certainly look into it, I mean, just remember, Winslow Gate Road, uh, there is a wall here, which the banding will be about the only thing that you will see if, that, while you're driving by. However, we are open to exploring that option if the board would like it so.
I mean, yeah, I mean, it's an extra feature, but it gets, it gets in the way of your, this, the CBS sign, I think.
Yeah, definitely.
On the, the end portion of the word, yes, certainly.
On the south and the west elevation as well as. All right, um, anybody, see, any other comments, Joan?
Uh, no, I like it as is, I feel like additional banding might start to look busy. You know, like, I feel like the stonework is so nice, but the banding might actually take away from it.
Okay. Bob?
Uh, no, I have no questions.
All right, um, Rocco? Yeah, I agree with, uh, Joan, I like it as is, I, I, I think they've come a long way with this, and, and it looks good. And Nicole?
Yeah, I think we covered all the questions, but, um, I, I think it looks good like this, I don't, I don't think that we need to, uh, add any banding to it, so.
All right, and I, I commented, did, I guess, and, uh, matching the brick, if you're matching the same brick veneers on CBS with the trash enclosure, I think that's fine, versus trying to match all the other areas. Um, was there something else with the trash enclosure, Eric, with the gate perhaps, or?
Um, just the, the gate, uh, the gate is, will need to change, because the cedar slats that are proposed are not, don't meet, um, the requirements for non-combustible, and so the, you know, that might be an opportunity to match what's being done on the enclosures elsewhere.
So that's, that's something-
Hudson Heritage, or if you want to leave it to staff, you know, we could, if, the ones for Hudson Heritage elsewhere are, uh, I think there is, I don't, I think there is steel paneling, I provided a-
Steel or fiber board or something?
Yeah, there, there's something non-compost- combustible that's also attractive.
Yep. All right, I'll le- we'll leave that to staff to, to negotiate, that, that, something that matches the rest would, would be good, I think.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
I move the planning board grant architectural review approval according to the elevations and materials presented, and subject to the comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies included, but not limited to the following one through five.
Second. Moved in seconded to grant conditional, call the question by roll call, Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes seven to zero. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, and I just want to thank Eric for all his help throughout during this process.
Yeah, thanks for coming back with a, a, a much nicer plan, that matches the historic.
Thank you. Have a good night, everybody.
Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Last up, we have a, uh, time extension for Stratford Farm Townhouse. So I moved that the planning board grant two 90-day time extensions of site plan approval and a final major subdivision approval from January 12th, 2022 forward to July 11th, 2022.
Second.
Moved in seconded, call the question, all is in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Any other business that the board wants to bring up tonight? I will, uh, just want to second everybody's comments and about, uh, Carol, and thanks for all her years of, of keeping us honest.
I was thinking, though, because we're on Zoom, you could actually still do this from South Carolina.
Ooh! We got that, we, all right. So thank you much, and we wish you well in retirement, and we'll see you again before that, but, uh-
It's just, um, not a five-hour meeting.
Yeah. You won't miss the five-hour, seven-hour meetings.
I'll think of you, I want meetings like you do.
We'll miss you.
All right, uh, I move we terminate the meeting.
A second.
Moved in seconded, call the question, all is in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Last motion of, of the year, and Carol's, uh, thing, so.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Yeah, happy holidays.
All right, good night, and happy holidays.
And happy-
New year's here.
And happy new year.